Welcome to the City of Pasco February twentieth twenty twenty four regular meeting. The city thanks you for being a part of the city government. At meetings, the city council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings and conducts other city business. Sorry. Agenda packets are available for anyone in attendance back to my right immediately to your right as you enter the door or for anyone who's following along online or somewhere in the ether at www.pasco-dashwa.gov/agenda. This meeting is being televised on live on PSC TV, channel one nine one on Spectrum Cable in Pasco, Richland and Richland and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel and GoToWebinar. This and the previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public may submit their comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by asking using the Ask Pasco app. With that, can we please get a roll call, Ms. Clerk?
Council members Barajas? Blaisdell? Grim?
Here.
Harpster?
Present.
Peralas?
Present.
Mayor Proten Milney?
Present.
And Mayor Serrano?
Present. We are all present in account for if you'll all join, stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So with that, we will roll into the actual meeting itself. Number four, item number four is the consent agenda. Now, all items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by a roll call vote as one motion in the form as listed below. Again, if you're following along, this is item number four. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by council members, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. So with that, item A, approval of meeting minutes for February fifth and February twelfth. Item B, and that that action is to approve the minutes of the Pasco City Council regular meeting and regular workshop held on February fifth twenty twenty four and February twelfth twenty twenty four respectively. Item B, bills and communications approving claims in the total amount of eleven million two hundred sixty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and two hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and sixty-two cents. And that approves claims in the total of that amount. Item C, resolution number four four one nine, project acceptance acceptance for West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phase One. Action is to prove that resolution. Resolution number four four two zero, inter local agreement for participation in the Benton Franklin Council of Governments. Again, the action is to prove that item. And item E, confirming Civil Service Commission Personnel Board reappointment of Erica Garcia. And again, it's to confirm the city manager's reappointment of Erica Garcia to position number three on the Civil Service Commission Personnel Board for a six-year term from February seventeenth twenty twenty four through February seventeenth twenty thirty. Having said that, can I get a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I I motion is I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second, yeah, and Mr. Harpster seconds. With that, Ms. Clerk?
Um, Councilmember Blaisdell? Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Councilmember Grim?
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Milney?
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. We will now roll on to item number five, proclamations and acknowledgements there are none. So now moving on to number six, everybody's favorite part, the public comment. The public may address city council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide a venue for debate or posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberative process and and input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed at staff, members who have access to specific information. Citizen comment will be normally limited three minutes each by the mayor, and we've got our little light here. It does go green, yellow, red to give you a kind of your impending doom. Those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments or submit them, submit written information for consideration by council outside of formal meetings. Lastly, when called upon, please state your name and your city or county of residency into the microphone. With that, uh, Mr. City Manager, do we have anyone that signed up for online public or I guess Mr. Director Rice? Okay, no one from uh, out there in the world that's looking to comment. So with that, I'll open it to chambers. Does anyone have here for public comments? Sir? And if you just push down on the should be gray button, there you go, you're read.
My name is Dallas Green. I live at one oh five oh eight West Court Street, and I would like just to speak about the bridge lighting project. It's a tough decision I think the council is going to undertake. I'm sure you want to be one of the cool kids and going with all the other cities. But Pasco recently had their biannual budget, and I believe it was six or eight million dollars that you had to dig into reserves. You've got some other big expenses coming up. We've got the Broadmore Tiff that's going to need to be funded, depending upon that development. Uh, I think twenty-five thousand dollars actually is a big piece of the budget when you consider that we're digging into reserves. So I would urge council to think very carefully about that and consider not funding that development study. Additionally, regarding the Pasco downtown district, relative to what was written in the Herald, I firmly believe that you should continue to look at and pursue any sort of prosecution. Have a third party look at it, be it a a county authority or a state, because this is your time to show that the buck stops with the city of Pasco, and we just don't let people run off with money. I think intentions were good originally, but bad people got in the works and incompetent people were allowed to remain, and you owe the citizens to seriously dig into it to prevent others and restore faith. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any additional public comments? In the back, my friend.
Carl Holder, four oh two West Lewis, downtown Pasco. Uh, I am here to to discuss the workshop, and it has to do with the downtown Pasco Development Authority update as presented. History and facts brief was formed in December two thousand and ten to manage the speciality kitchen in the farmer's market and to use Columbia Community Development Block Grant Funds. Received its five oh one C three in two thousand and twelve, that's twelve years ago. So Washington State Main Street member since two thousand and fifteen. Among other benefits, donors can receive a seventy-five percent credit on their BNO. And the average city cost a hundred thousand dollars per year was offset seventy-five percent by the state utility tax reimbursement. Looks like twenty-five thousand dollars a year to me. So the recent audit report highlighted management of funds and compliance with with requirements and laws, raising doubts about the validity of expenses, concerns about the agency's operational effectiveness and overall trust. The city council appoints the board from interested volunteers. The DPDA managers were selected by the city. Goings by Rick White, Gustavo by Michael Morales. The reason is, they said, significant turnover in executive director hindered the establishment of efficient organization. So my comment is there was a last minute meddling by the former city manager in the Cinco de Mayo planning, and he put David Cortinas in there so all deals collapsed under that borlote. So what are the consequences as reported in La Voz, only in Spanish? Who's going to pay the debt? Some members of the city council are asking for criminal investigations. Grim, Peralas, Milney. Deben recibir castigos criminales y hacerles pagar todo que se debe junto con las pérdidas, wrote Mr. Cortinas. So what are the next steps? The city is to fully account for the DPDA finances and considering the significant investment by the city, the staff recommends that the council consider dissolution of the DPDA cleanup on aisle seven. So my consideration is maintain the DPDA with a skeleton staff and board, then reorganize the DPDA, save the city's significant investment and save downtown Pasco. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. Any additional? Any additional public comments? Going once, going twice, sold. All right, public comment is now closed. We'll move to item number seven. Reports from committees or officers, and this is where the council members have the opportunity to report on their activities throughout the past week, and I see Ms. Blaisdell.
Uh, myself and Councilwoman Grim attended the District One Community Meeting hosted by Pasco Police Department. Uh, Lieutenant Petty John led the meeting with Chief Rosky, Captain Paramore and a handful of officers eagerly listening to concerns of the citizen. Um, it was held at Terra Vida. Uh, it was a very well-attended meeting. There were officers that were able to translate in Spanish, um, so everyone was able to be heard. The topics of conversations were street racing, graffiti and car thefts. It was a a very well, um, turned out by the citizens, and it's, I think this will be, um, very well received by the community and grow. Um, I also attended Fur Babies with Fuzz, a possum adoption event at the Tri-City Animal Shelter. Again, Pasco Police and the Kenwood Police Department and Director Rice were in attendance. Um, the owner of Court Street Chevron stepped up and sponsored the first twenty adoptions of the day. So I saw a lot of happy people or happy families take home their new best friends. So that was a really, uh, good event to attend and see how the animal shelter is being ran. And then today, um, again, myself and Councilwoman Grim attended District Two Business Watch Meeting hosted by Pasco Police with Lieutenant Decker along with Deputy Chief Cook and Captain Paramore and a handful of officers. This time listening to the business concerns. District two, so it's three ninety-five west of three ninety-five in this meeting. Personally, uh, this is where my hotel is located, so, um, they listen to quite a different variety of business, um, leaders and what we deal with on a day-to-day basis. Um, so I think this also will help the community and grow. And hopefully have some solutions to prevent future, um, issues. They have District Two has their community meeting coming up. Um, for anyone that lives in west of three ninety-five this Thursday at six thirty with, uh, Ray Reynolds Middle School in the library. So definitely, if you live in District Two, it's a good event to attend. Um, and one more, Pasco Public Facilities District Board met today to get the design and construction phase underway. They visited the Snow Homish and Linwood facilities, and they are trying to figure out the design of the aquatics park. So the board did appoint today, um, to the Ambassador Committee, Paul White Marsh and former District Six City Council Craig Mahoney and Pasco High student Kira Bernie to their ambassador committee.
Sounds like a busy week. Thank you very much. Councilman Grim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I attended those with Councilwoman Blaisdell, and she forgot we were also at the Tierra Vida ribbon cutting also this week, yes, to for Mr. Brochi's continued investment in our community. Um, I also appreciate staff making themselves available, um, to visit with me about change orders, about transportation, really trying to catch me up to speed on a lot of things going around the city. I really appreciate it. Um, I went to my first Benton Franklin Benton Franklin Council of Governments meeting this week, and that was also quite informative, and, um, I still have a lot to learn there. And then, um, one of my highlights was the of the week was to come by and watch the Pasco Police Department and Chief Ken Rosky swear in three new officers. It was a great day for the officers, their family and our community of Pasco, so I appreciate being part of that too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim. Mr. Harpster?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Tri-Deck Annual Economic Outlook Luncheon with City Manager Lincoln. Presentation was on artificial intelligence, and it was a little scary what can be done, but I think, um, there's a lot of opportunity for municipal governments to put that to use, and, um, excited to see what we can do with that. So it was great. And then today attended a, um, community meeting of sorts at a residence home with Mayor Proten Milney discussing, um, speeding vehicles and traffic safety on the west end of Court Street. And I just want to go shout to interim director Sarah for attending that and leading and answering a lot of questions from all sorts of different directions, and, um, thought you did really well on that. And then also Captain Paramore and Lieutenant Decker attended as well. And so appreciated through you guys answering questions so that I could stand in the back and not. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster. Ms. Barajas?
Thank you for that, Mayor. Um, so just real quick, wanted to add, I almost thought you were going to miss out on the ribbon cutting, but, um, Mr. Grim brought that up, so several of us, most of us were there. Great, great event. Just wanted to add real quick, not much to say regarding the COPA, uh, meeting on Friday. Mr. Milley was there as well. Just a redoing of the bylaws, the policies, nothing much to report on that, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Barajas. Uh, Mayor Proten Milney?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I did want to elaborate a little bit more. I did want to make a shout out to Dallas Green for opening up his house and, uh, putting this all together was a really great meeting. It was well-attended. Again, the police department, we just listed, we're all there. They've obviously had a great week there as far as attending all these other meetings, but very informed, also Deputy Chief, uh, Police Cook was there as well. And, uh, again, Maria Sarah did an excellent job. I was really impressed. And, uh, so, yeah, it was a very good meeting. Hopefully we'll get stuff done and looking forward to the feedback. And then we had another meeting right after that at six o'clock about Road ninety-six and the speeding that's happened on that road as well. And, uh, yeah, again, I was glad that the police department could show up, the city staff, and it's stuff like this that really helps us solve problems. Sometimes there's not a easy answer, but it's nice to know that people care and that we're trying to solve these problems as best we can with the financial we spend, financial, uh, financial budget that we have, I guess, put it that way. So anyway, and, uh, yeah, and all the other meetings with Terra Vida and the COPA, it's been a busy week as well, so thank you.
Thank you. I'll just, uh, be brief on my report. I had an opportunity to attend the Lodging Tax Advisory Commission with our awesome commissioners. I see one of them back, Hector. Thank you for your dedication to the community, not just, I guess, not just Pasco, but all of Tri-Cities as well, but specifically to Pasco. Um, we're grateful to have you on on the on the team. And and we talked about funding some special projects and some, uh, opportunities to continually bring, uh, people into the city of Pasco for tourist events. I also attended, and I'm going to tip the hand at the next, uh, element of this meeting, which is the Japanese Beetle Eradication Program presentation. Uh, I was sitting on the solid, I sit on the Solid Waste Advisory Commission, uh, which is made up of, uh, members of the public, members of the county, members of our staff, a couple other folks, uh, in Franklin County, um, even out in the county as well. Um, and we had a lot of opportunity to to discuss and hear, uh, Mr. Acosta's presentation on this. Very passionate, very educated, um, understands, uh, you know, the the risk of these particular beetles. So, uh, I'll hear it again, look forward to hearing it again. Uh, and we also did a couple things like, uh, adopt our new bylaws. On Thursday unofficially, I I was up in Olympia for some various, uh, meetings. I went with Commissioner Baumann, that is Franklin County Commissioner Baumann. He was nice enough to tote me along. Uh, and we did hear from Senators Marks, Mark Schessler out of the ninth Legislative District, as well as Senator Mark Mullet. I I don't know what district he is, but he's up on the west side. About some money that was put into the budget, uh, for the Hapo, the HVAC system, and that had passed through the Senate Appropriations side, um, and so the capital side of of the budget. And the question will be whether or not that money, uh, passes through the House side. So, uh, that was looking positive. Uh, again, not there officially on city business, but, uh, the issue arose and we had a great opportunity to talk. So hopefully that's a positive movement for the funding of some of the things with Hapo. Feel like I'm forgetting something, but, um, oh, yes, yeah, thanks. That was the that was the highlight of the weekend. I I had the opportunity to see off the young men from Chihuahua High School participating in the state wrestling tournament. Now, I will note that, uh, I understand that several folks from Pasco also, uh, were able to qualify. Now, I apologize to those young men that I can't name them off, or I didn't have the opportunity to say goodbye to them. Certainly, to the extent that, uh, our school district or particular principals are listening, please don't hesitate to invite city staff or city council members or myself to your events when you're celebrating the youth. Celebrating the youth of our community is something that needs to be a staple and needs to be continually observed by this body. So I did get to see these young men off, several of them placed. I don't believe any one of their particular weight class, but as a teen, Chihuahua took second uh, in the four A division. So, I mean, very proud of those young men. Uh, I was hoping to catch them Sunday when they came back, but, you know, when you're going over the pass on a bus, sometimes in the winter, you never know how long a trip's going to take. So, uh, congrats to the to those young men, uh, you know, we're very proud of you. You represented Pasco very well, even with the dyed hair, um, or bleached, I guess. But you did a great job. We're extremely proud of you and and, you know, grateful to your commitment to our community and making it better. So with that, um, I think we've covered pretty much everything, and we'll move on to item seven B, which is the Japanese Beetle Eradication Program Presentation. Again, Mr. Acosta will be presenting it, but, uh, Ms. Pichon?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Acosta up to the podium. And I think, Mayor, you gave a great introduction, so I don't need to do anything more.
Test, test, all right. Well, good evening, guys. Uh, my name is Camila Acosta. I am the Japanese Beetle Eradication Coordinator with the Washington State Department of Agriculture Pest Program, and I'm here to talk about Japanese beetle. Um, I'll try and, um, get through the history and background a little bit quicker so we can get to stuff that actually pertains to Pasco. Um, but the the history is is important to understand, um, you know, the situation in Pasco, so. Japanese beetle, it's a scarab beetle. Uh, it's a highly invasive pest. It has over three hundred species of host plants, including some really important ones to us like hops, grapes and roses. And you can see on that map of the U.S., that purple is all area that is considered generally infested as in eradication is close to impossible. We've had a pretty long history in our country with Japanese beetle since its introduction to New Jersey in nineteen sixteen. And from there, it's just been able to move its way across the, uh, U.S. slowly, and it doesn't do it on its own, even though it can fly. It does so by, um, train, cars and our automobile. So, or trains, planes and automobiles. How about that? You can see its life cycle here on the top right. It spends most of the year underground as a larvae or grub, as you may know them. So around, uh, right now, they're still pretty far below ground, uh, six to eight inches. We've had a pretty mild winter, so it might actually be closer, a little bit closer to the surface, about six inches. And they'll spend most of the year underground, and in hour latitude, they start coming out around the end of June. When we detected Japanese beetle back in twenty twenty, it happened, uh, first, detected one beetle in Sunnyside in the Walmart parking lots. And then towards the end of the season, we had deployed some more traps, and as we were taking them all down, we caught two more beetles at that, uh, Rose Garden in Grandview, if you're familiar, um, right there on Wine Country Road. And that kind of set our alarms off to go ahead and put together a pretty robust trapping survey. So in twenty twenty-one, instead of having dozen traps in the area, we had over nine hundred traps in the area, the forty-nine square mile grid that we ended up with. And in twenty twenty-one, we caught twenty-four thousand forty-eight beetles. That is a lot of beetles. Doesn't quite compare to the east, though. They catch them by the tens of millions. I'm not joking. But still, uh, eradication project is very much warranted in this situation. So around this time is when I came on, uh, towards the end of this season. And in twenty twenty-two was our first year that we had chemical treatments to properties. Um, I'll explain a little bit more about that entails later. We were able to treat, um, two thousand properties of the thirty-five hundred we were hoping for, and these were mostly residential properties, um, city and school districts, uh, school district properties. That same year, that was our first year of treatment. So we, you know, with no treatment the previous year, our numbers didn't really, um, increase by much. Uh, we did catch a few, you know, fewer beetles, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-four, but still a very obvious problem in Grandview. You can see the area where all those big circles are. That's where we were catching, uh, up to seven hundred and thirty-six beetles per trap. That is the largest circle there. Uh, we also had the beetle spread to Wapato. Uh, we detected a new population there that we're dealing with. This will be the second year of treatments there in Wapato. I won't touch on it too much, though. In twenty twenty-three, we expanded the treatment area based on those trapping results from the previous year. So we just, you know, expand the treatment area, uh, based on our, uh, where we're catching beetles. And then we treated again, uh, this year, treated more properties, and that's good. Closer to three thousand properties. You can see that purple outline is where we expanded to, so we went from forty-nine square miles to seventy-four square miles. And this is just a spread of the detections, um, last year. That was kind of also in the previous slide. Now, twenty twenty-three was also the first year that we detected a beetle in Franklin County. Our first beetle detection, uh, the on the one on the left there was actually, um, done by, uh, that beetle was detected by Franklin County Horticultural Pest and Disease Board. So that was a really huge, uh, moment, you know, to realize that our relationship that we had been carrying on is super important because they had actually gone out and got funding to fund a trapper, and that was huge that they were able to catch that. So from there, we took over the trapping efforts in Franklin County. We distributed about four hundred and fifty traps in this area. These grids, by the way, are one square mile grids. And then we caught this other cluster of small beetle symbols over here. That's three more detection sites where we caught four more beetles. So for a total of five beetles in Franklin County in twenty twenty-three. And these are just treatment areas for twenty twenty-four proposed. So I will highlight as for reference that we're hoping to treat just under twelve thousand properties. Quite a bit, uh, a lot more properties than the previous year because we're also including the entire city of Sunnyside. That's a whole other presentation. Wapato, the boundaries actually did not change. And then this is what matters to us here. So this orange boundary is the proposed quarantine area here in Pasco. And that inner one square mile, uh, square of parcels is the proposed treatment area. Okay, and then you can see on the big blown-up map where that is in relation to us. You'll notice that the first detection does not include any kind of treatment or quarantine plans. That's because we follow a guideline where we only consider expanding a treatment area or proposed quarantine area if we catch two or more beetles during the whole season in that one square mile grid, and that's what determines what areas we expand to. So no treatment, no quarantine for that single detection in the west. And if I zoom in here a little bit more, you'll see each and every parcel. Again, um, mostly residential, um, you know, some city and school district properties. We are, um, treating all these properties, and you'll see here, um, the yellow outlines are properties that we're awaiting consent from, but you'll see the green outlines are properties that have already gone ahead and given us permission um, to go ahead and treat this spring, uh, which is awesome. Um, Pasco is doing a really, really, this area is doing a really, really good job. Um, I think people are, are pretty concerned. Um, we do operate, uh, based on consent one hundred percent. So if you do not give us permission to access your property, don't give us permission for our contractor to access your property, um, we will not perform the treatment. Um, and of course, uh, all this activity is dependent on legislative funding. Uh, the, the main way this is done is through this consent form. Uh, every resident in that area has already received a letter in the mail with this consent form along with a letter detailing, you know, kind of the history of explained tonight and why we need to perform this eradication. And also a frequently asked questions page, uh, that we've kind of perfected and, and, uh, um, made pretty concise over the years of questions coming in, um, all available in English and Spanish. All of our stuff is in English and Spanish. Um, so you can give your consent online, in person with us, um, if we go door to door, or you can turn in a physical form to your city hall. And residents usually receive a forty-eight hour notice, um, based on their preferred contact method that they fill in on that form. So email, phone or text message. Um, the product is called Celeprin. It's, uh, active ingredient is called chlorantinilapril. It's a low risk insecticide. It's specifically a larvicide. And we apply it from April to June to turf grass. Now specifically in our treatments, we've, we apply only to turf grass and then just areas just right under ornamental plants. So no vegetable beds, garden beds, nothing like that. Um, and something that's really important to understand is why our results, you know, let just last year is the first year we saw a big reduction in beetles. Um, after one year of treatment is that we're actually targeting the grubs that hatch late in the season. So they hatch in September and October. So we will still, we will see beetles in Pasco this year. Likely more than, more beetles than we saw last year because we didn't treat last year. So those beetles that we did catch, we were hoping those are all the beetles, but and the chance that they weren't, you know, those beetles most likely reproduced. So we will see beetles. Um, and that's why those results lag behind again. Um, the other component of the project is the proposed internal quarantine. Now this has already been in a, in effect in the Grandview area since twenty twenty-two. And specifically, these are some of the regulated articles that the rule language, um, designates as not being able to leave the quarantine area during the Japanese beetle adult flight season, which I should really have up here. But that is from May fifteenth to October fifteenth is when we consider, you know, at beetles being active and flying and reproducing and destroying our crops. Um, the big one, um, that I have been tasked with arranging is, um, yard debris. So this is particularly a problem in Yakima County as, um, especially in Grandview as there's no waste separation. So when you throw your yard debris in, in, in your bin and it gets taken away, you know, miles and miles away. Um, that is a huge avenue to transport Japanese beetles, which is why we tried to give residents in the original quarantine area, a, uh, place to drop off their yard debris for free. Um, because they would be impacted by this quarantine. So this is a picture of early twenty twenty-three. Um, that's out there in Grandview, um, South Grandview on Euclid. Um, and you can see it gets a lot of use from residents and landscapers and the cities even. Um, and this is something that's worked out in Grandview, but now that that area is expanding and expanding to Pasco, um, it's not gonna be the, it's not gonna be able to work the same because we don't want residents from Pasco or anywhere else, you know, driving to Grandview with their potentially infested yard debris. Um, so right now, we've been looking at a couple of different options here in Pasco. Um, the very first one was, um, that was brought to my attention was, there was this parcel of land that, um, I believe the city owns that was originally planned for a fire station in a park, as I understand. And it was considered as a site because, um, it was nice and open and wasn't currently being used. Uh, the problems with it though are it's being outside the quarantine area. First of all, I'm pretty obvious there. Uh, so you would actually have to adjust the quarantine boundaries. And, um, that brings some other issues, um, just on its own, but, um, there's also potential with, um, you know, disruption of neighbors in the area with a big collection operation going on. Um, some people might not appreciate that in the community, especially if the only reason they're absorbed in the quarantine area is just to accommodate a site like this. Um, and also just being able to condition the public to stop putting their uh, yard debris and, and their curbside container is pretty difficult. Um, especially with our timeframe, uh, that we're dealing with here, uh, just a couple of months until Japanese beetles are gonna be flying around. Um, so other potential solutions that I'm going through and then trying to kind of just working through and talking out right now is potentially with basin disposal, um, setting, you know, the potential of maybe setting up some kind of route that is just for organics that would guarantee that that waste is collected. And then we can control it here in the quarantine area and it doesn't have to leave, um, to be disposed of. And, you know, thus present, thus preventing the spread of Japanese beetle. So we're working through that right now. Um, if we, if we developed, um, and, and, and set up, not develop, but set up some kind of site where that really beautifully drawn rectangle is, uh, in Microsoft Paint, by the way, shout out, um. Um, if we use that site, at best, it would probably be a short-term solution just because it's just right in the middle of town, you know, and Grandview, it's outside. Um, it's next to a rendering plant, so people don't really wanna go there anyway. Um, that's just out of sight, which is great, but just in the middle here in this neighborhood, just, it's just a hard, it would be difficult. So a more long-term solution is what we're looking for here as eradication of Japanese beetle will take, uh, several years. This treatment needs to happen every single year until we get three consecutive years of negative results. Um, I really think that with just having caught five beetles, we have a really, really great opportunity here in Pasco to, um, eradicate this population before it gets as large as say Grandview or Wapato. So I'm optimistic that, you know, just seeing these parcels light up green and more and more come in every day, um, I'm pretty excited about that. Um, now the support that we might need from the city is, are along with eradication, uh, spraying and the quarantine, our outreach, as you can imagine, is, is a pretty robust program. Um, you can see we've done everything from, uh, going door to door to, um, hanging out outside city halls in Mapton when people turn in their bills, get people to sign up there. I mean, pretty much last year, for example, anywhere that there was a gathering of more than two people in Grandview or Mapton, we made sure we were there handing out information. Um, and it's, it is, it, it, it does bring us a lot of those consents. So just a few examples here of things that were, that we've done in the past that we would like to implement here in Pasco and you know, you guys are much more in tune with your community than I am. I'm, I live in Ellensburg, so I really have no idea what's going on down here besides Japanese beetles. So, you know, ideas are always welcome. My, uh, contact info will be up there. You can also reach me through, uh, Angela for sure. Um, you know, we've done anything from putting stickers on coffee cups in Grandview, you know, worked with a couple of coffee shops doing that. Um, I just, yeah, uh, pretty much it's long-term, um, just, just ideas. Ideas are what we need, you know, ways, you know, every community is different and just ways of reaching people here. Um, you know, it's all about education for us because we just don't wanna, I think most people are pretty supportive of the program in general. Um, we just don't wanna surprise people, you know, we just don't wanna surprise people with a treatment to their door one day, you know? So I think the, the more they know and, um, the more ways we have of getting this information to people, uh, the better this program will be off. So. Um, thank you. I was a little long. Um, sorry for that. It's just, uh, I do this for a living, so I just, uh, talk about it a lot. So I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and thank you for trekking downhill.
Yeah, of course.
Check questions or just? Yeah, we, no, we've got a couple. So if you'll stick around for a quick minute, I see Mr. Grimm.
Yes, thank you for the, um, presentation there and, you know, I see a lot of resources being allocated and you know, I, is there anything the beetles are doing be, besides destroying the crops? I mean, I see, that's huge. I mean, we are an agricultural community. I mean, what else are they doing besides just destroying crops?
Um, well, they're destroying your lawn as well. Uh, the grubs aren't innocent. They don't just sit around. I mean, they have to eat something, right? And what they do is they eat the roots of your grass. So golf courses, um, school yards, you know, anything that has really well manicured lawns, that is prime territory for Japanese beetle. So the grubs, you know, cause just as much damage as the adults. You'll find huge brown patches that you water and water. And it just doesn't come back and you can, you know, it gets to a point where you can just peel back that um, grass like a carpet, you know, it's just, it's that bad. And that's, that's the situation we have in Grandview for sure. Is you can see damage to the grass from the grubs and also just the transition up to a tree that's been completely defoliated. So.
No, thank you. And your, your first map you showed us there with all the purple in the northeast, I mean, it almost looked apocalyptic. You know, like they were taking over there. I mean, are we just rearranging deck chairs on the Titanic here that they're coming here in a matter of time and we're just buying years, maybe a decade or two, or what's, what's the long term here?
Well, the long term is, I won't go into kind of the, the state classification for quarantine. I mean, that's their, our big motivation is to be able to keep trading with our partners without restriction. Um, and that's why we need to have an ongoing eradication. And that's what lets us keep trading with our international and, um, you know, with, in our national partners. Um, that tied there, you'll notice it kind of stopped at a certain point. That's when, that, that took about forty years for them to get that far. And then people were like, what, started to find chemicals and other control methods that actually worked. Um, right now, the biggest risk is gonna be, um, obviously not doing anything. This beetle has been successfully eradicated in western states in, in, you know, recently. Um, in Idaho, in Colorado, uh, using the same methods and chemical treatment that we have, that we're using now. Uh, you can also point at Oregon. Uh, they've been dealing with an infestation of a similar size since twenty sixteen. And they started off with about twenty-two thousand beetles. This most recent year, they caught just over three thousand. So that also gives you a kind of a timeframe. That's how long we're expecting this eradication to take in Grandview where there are tens of thousands of beetles. Um.
Okay, no, thank you. Just one last question too. You said low risk. I think you were referring to the insecticide or did you mean just to, to humans or animals or what, what did you mean by that?
So this product, Celeprin, has a really great safety record with humans and pets. Um, you know, so much so that there's not really, there's not even a signal word on the product itself. Uh, this product has also been used in, in all the other western states for their eradications pretty much. Um, it's just kind of become the standard for Japanese beetle control as it's so low risk, but it's also very targeted at the larvae in the soil. Um, that, you know, people like that for the, um, you know, minimal impact to the environment. Um, yeah, I, you know, it's still a pesticide.
Yep.
Um, you know, there's, there's no doubt about that, but in this case, because of the targeted application and the active ingredient, um, we can kill lots of beetles and not harm people or pets. The only thing is that we do spread this messaging everywhere, which is the, um, re-entry interval for the product, which is until the product is dry. And that's, you know, everywhere on all of our publications that we put out, all of our flyers, all of our, everything that we give to homeowners, um, the notifications that go out, the voicemails, all that, you know, that restricted, restricted entry, entry interval is gonna be on there. So.
Awesome. Appreciate your hard work and your eradication efforts. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, thanks for coming down here to give that presentation. Um, I assume you've seen the office?
Yes.
Okay. Michael Scott throws away the radon test kits that Toby's putting out. So with that in mind, what do the traps look like and where are they generally placed?
Right. Um, I, I would have brought a trap, but I didn't know how appropriate that was. Um, the, the traps, you've probably seen them around Pasco last year, maybe. Um, it's just a yellow vein with a green bag hanging off it. Um, they're safe to touch. Um, you can go up to them and read the label on it and everything, look inside it, whatever. Um, uh, just don't touch it, but you can just look at it, observe it, it's fine. Um, what it does is it attracts beetles and, uh, it just has a pheromone lure. Um, has two lures actually. One's a pheromone that, um, you know, mating pheromone. And then the other one is just a synthetic rose or flower scent called Draniol. And, um, since they love roses and flowers so much and they love reproducing, I mean, this, the trap works really well.
Okay. And then, um, last question, is there in, within the quarantine area, is there a certain percentage of land that we'd need to be treated to be effective to the whole area? For instance, if, you know, ten percent of the parcel owners allows you guys to treat it, would that be effective for the whole area? Or is there a certain amount that you need for it to really be effective?
Um, well, to be sure, we would love one hundred percent. Um, if, you know, if we see that there are, there is certain pushback in certain areas, the places that we would prioritize first are just are gonna, it's gonna go by land area. So, um, schools and parks that have a larger grass area, that's what we're gonna focus on first. Um, and, you know, it's, we're really just talking about turf grass areas. Um, if funding is available, we would love to do foliar treatments as well that kill the adults. And that is actually really huge in eradicating them. Uh, Oregon didn't really see huge reductions until they started killing adults with spray as well. Um, but now I'm just, you know, rambling, so. But did I answer your question at all? I don't think it did. I'm sorry.
Not quite. If.
I'm sorry. I've been in Pasco all day. It's, I've had a long day. I'm sorry.
There's a lot going on. Um, if, um, let's say, rephrase this, let's say there, there's five schools all next to each other with all the yards and only one school allows you to do it hypothetically. Since it's not anywhere near the majority, is it even gonna be effective to the whole quarantine area? Or would you really need, you know, two or three or four of those schools?
I'm understanding your question now. Yeah. And that's why it's super vital that you encourage your neighbors to sign up as well because you treat your property, but your neighbor does not get their trap, property treated. I mean, these beetles can fly, so they just fly twenty-five feet and reinvest your property. So.
Okay.
Um, we really need as high as a percentage of, you know, positives and those consents as we can get. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Officer. Ms. Ross.
Thank you. Um, so you mentioned you are not from this area. You spent the whole day here today. Um, last year was not sprayed or treated. There was no treatment last year.
No.
What determines, and sorry, I have a couple of questions here. What determines whether you're gonna treat or not?
Um, the number of beetles that we find in one of these square mile grid, grids right here. So how far back is this? So one of these square mile grids, you'll see where we are thinking about is that kind of first magenta grid where the beetles are. So if we catch more than two beetles in one of those square miles, we are going to consider that area for eradication. Um, you know, that's chemical treatment and possible internal quarantine. So as, you know, as it grows, as that area grows, that's how it, that's how it grows is, is grid cell by grid cell. Yeah.
And so taking that into consideration, there was not enough, obviously. Is there any plan to treat or pre-treat preventive? Uh, instead of eradicating or coming in to treat when it's already there? What can the community do? What can the residents do to prevent?
Um, I, WSDA does not give out, you know, pesticide recommendations, you know, for example, we let WSU do that. Um, so I don't, I don't really wanna advocate for pre-treating. Um, we, we follow this protocol in an effort to avoid over treating areas, especially if there's no beetles there. Um, so for example, that area where there's only one beetle, um, and we're not treating there. How we would deal with that is we would just increase our trapping in that area. Um, some pretty high density trapping. We're talking probably a trap every two hundred feet. So that any Japanese beetles in that area, most likely will get caught in that trap. Um, but yeah, unless it meets that threshold, we don't really recommend treatment. If homeowners are interested in treatment methods, they can talk to, you know, WSU, uh, extension about that. Yeah.
Okay. That's all questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Um, seeing no other questions, I really appreciate you spending your day down here. And again, I appreciate, um, the time that you've spent, uh, not just here, but also throughout the county. Um, you know, I appreciate that you kind of see something, say something, do something. So, you know, it's, it's sounds like, uh, hopefully we can be effective here and, uh, keep our crop and keep our trade. So.
I hope so too. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's my information if you wanted.
Yeah, and we'll definitely reach out. Yeah, and we'll definitely reach out through Angela, uh, to the extent that we need to.
Sorry, I also had one at the end. There you go. I'm just gonna stop.
That's all good. We'll take care of it, uh, and safe travels back to Ellensburg. Thank you. Uh, with that, we will move on to item C, which is twenty twenty-three Community Survey Highlights Presentation. Also from Angela Pichon.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight I'm gonna provide a brief presentation on a tool the city of Pasco has used since, uh, twenty or two thousand and five. The National Community Survey, or I'll say the NCS. Uh, the NCS is a statistically valid benchmark survey. Uh, the data can be used to inform decision-making as well as can support staff efforts and grant funding applications. The NCS measures ten community facets and I'll ask, um, Director Rice to go to the next slide. Sorry, I'm gonna try to make this brief for you all. So they're listed here on the slide. Uh, while we may see fluctuations from cycle, from one cycle to the next. Conducting the NCS regularly allows us to gauge feedback and opinions from our residents and provide us with a community scorecard over time. Uh, and go ahead and go to the next slide. Thank you. Some of the highlights from the twenty twenty-three survey, uh, this cycle, we sent out three thousand surveys to homes throughout Pasco. The response rate was ten percent with a six percent margin of error. This falls within the range needed to make results statistically valid. The survey had the option to complete it in Spanish and we had fourteen, uh, responses in Spanish this year. Uh, fifty percent of the respondents consider themselves Hispanic, Latino, or of Spanish origin. Results this cycle show steady trends, which is great, um. When we look at trends, we're looking at statistically significant difference of eight percent. So when you look at the data that's available, um, that's, that's where you would wanna focus. Um, and see kind of where are those trends and why are they changing? Um, but I will note that most of those significant changes really restore us back to historical levels. Uh, so the last cycle we did was in twenty twenty-one, um, and we were looking very different, uh, at that period of time. So we saw a, a lot of great, um, increases, uh, some to highlight our police fire and EMS services. Um, all went back up to, um, great levels. I do wanna point out that the satisfaction of overall customer service for, um, Pasco employees actually did increase eleven percent. Um, and that is on top of a nine percent increase from the twenty twenty-one survey. So we are seeing some great results come back from our customer service for the city of Pasco staff. We are able to do some custom questions and those questions generally are about policy. Questions or policy-related topics, um, and those, um, selected for this survey were. To really gauge where our community is getting information from the city of Pasco, uh, we're ramping up our efforts with. Uh, communications outreach and marketing, uh, so we wanted to take some opportunity there. Um, we also gauge the community on the importance of local, um, the local community addressing homelessness, um, and. I've provided, um, some of those essential or very important aspects of homelessness and how the community would like us to address them. Uh, and that was really just for us, um, as, uh, staff to understand, you know, the, the priorities when it comes to homelessness. Um, we also opt to do a open participation portion of the survey, so that is anyone and everyone can participate. And those results are kept separate from the statistically valid, so when, um, you look at the data, there's two sets. You've got the trends over time and then you have the open participation, um. With the open participation, we, we often see some similar trends, um, with the results, however. The results can really be swayed, um, you never know, um, if an individual is participating. Because they want something specifically highlighted, so we do tend to, um, put a higher focus on, on the other portion. Um, I'll also note that we had sixteen respondents for that open participation outside of the city of Pasco. Um, so anyone from the community or beyond can, can really participate. Um, for comparison, I did provide a s- small sample of the two data sets within the council packet tonight, not gonna go into that. Um, and there's no action requested from council tonight. It's really an opportunity to provide the information to you all. Um, and note that the full report as well, both data sets will be made available to the public later this week on our city website. And through social media channels.
Thank you for that, Ms. Pichon. Uh, do we have any comments or questions from council? Uh, Councilmember Harpster.
Sorry, uh, thanks for that presentation. I did wanna note that I loved it over the last two to three years that we've done two surveys. Our customer service has gone up twenty percent. And, um, you know, we've had a lot of turnover in positions seated here over the last few years, and so to see. That even with that turnover has gone up twenty percent, I think speaks volumes, um, just from my own. Uh, knowledge, can you go back a couple of slides to the custom questions? So. I'm not sure I was reading this right. I just wanna clarify that seventy-two percent of respondents essentially are saying that providing emergency shelter. Is essential or very important?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, um. Second question, you know, we're a city of around eighty thousand people, so three hundred and ten responses is a point three eight percent sample. And I know it's incredibly difficult to get people to take surveys, is there, is that? In line with what we've seen in the past? Is that an increase or decrease, or is it generally about that low?
It's actually, uh, generally in the last several cycles have been that, um, and it is. Taken from all different districts, so you'll even be able to go into the online dashboard and look at your individual districts to see. How many responses came back from individual districts or citywide, um, and you can really break down into that data set. Um, but it is usually between a ten and twelve percent, um, and, and that's where the. The science behind their survey kind of comes into play, um, you, you're able to, um. Do a, a set of the respondents, but I would, sorry, to be short and succinct now. That is pretty average for what we've, what we are seeing.
Uh, that's it, thank you.
I see no additional lights, uh, thank you for that information and. You know, hopefully as we continue to have these surveys go out, that will have a little more participation would be ideal to give us a little bit more. I, I know we've worked, used the term statistically significant, uh, but as Mr. Harpster said, less than roughly one third of one percent. Uh, of those, of the citizens of our, now I understand there are minors and all that stuff, but, uh. Be nice if we can find a way to get more involvement, so we appreciate the efforts nonetheless. Um, with that, we will move on to item eight, hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating there to. There are none such actions, so we'll move on to item number nine. Ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. With that, we have a handful of actions, so with that. Item nine A, um, is an ordinance number four seven zero five, Kelly rezone from RS twelve to R one. And I think we're gonna take it to Mr. Gonzalez, who, from whom we'll hear for quite a while.
My, my, my apologies in advance.
Hey, it's all right, let's just knock it out.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We've got three rezones, um, on the docket for this evening. Uh, this is the first one and it's associated with the request for a zone change located on Road seventy-six. Um, kinda hard to see here, but the Pasco Municipal Code specifies the criteria for the zone change in title twenty-five. Uh, some of the criteria address the changing conditions to warrant the, the rezone request, the effect on the property owner. Uh, applying for the, uh, the rezoned and alignment with the adopted, uh, comprehensive plan. Um, on the next slide, um, this is generally the process for the rezone, um, a, a rezone. So it could either be a city initiated, rezoned, or initiated by a property owner or developer, an agent, authorized agent of the property. Uh, then, uh, there's an evaluation, uh, for, by staff that's conducted. And when it's ready to go to a public hearing, a public notice is issued to, uh, uh, property owners, uh, per the code. A, a public hearing with the hearing examiner is conducted and typically within ten days of that hearing. Um, the hearing examiner will issue fi- uh, final findings and recommendation. And then it ends up at the next available regular business meeting, which is where we're at. These rezones were actually conducted at public hearings. Uh, in late twenty twenty-three, uh, December. So, uh, on the next slide, uh, the details about the, uh, rezone, uh, in particular, uh, the applicant is requesting a zone change from RS twelve. To R one, uh, the property is located at eighteen oh two, Road seventy-six. This is approximately nine hundred and fifty or so feet west, uh, north of West Court Street and Road seventy-six. Uh, the site is just over five acres. A public hearing was conducted in December and received a recommendation of approval from the hearing examiner. Uh, there were no, uh, comments received, uh, uh, from members of the public, either opposing or supporting the rezone. And, uh, staff concurs with the, uh, hearing examiner recommendation. Their request is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Um. Do we have any questions before we get a motion?
Mister, Mister Mayor, may I go through my little script here? I don't wanna try to compete with Mr. Gonzalez's, uh, entertainment, but I'll try, um. This is a quasi judicial hearing, uh, proceeding, uh, to render a final decision on the materials presented. Excuse me, it's defined as a proceeding in which the council defines the legal rights, duties, and privileges of specific part, uh, specific parties. In a hearing proceeding or other contested proceeding, uh, the appearance of fairness doctrine applies and the hearing must be, uh, fair in three respects. Form, substance, and appearance. All council members should consider whether they have potential conflicts as follows. A, a demonstrated bias for or against any of the parties. B, any direct or indirect financial interest in the outcome of the proceeding which would affect the council members personally. Uh, C, whether there has been any prejudgment of the issues prior to hearing the facts. D, whether there has been any ex parte contact with anyone other than staff prior to this hearing. And finally, E, any other conflict which a council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. If any council member has any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. Seeing none, uh, are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in these proceedings?
That was a little slow, sorry. I, I just wanna mention to my involvement in land development, just for the public's awareness that. I don't know any of these property owners, I'm not involved with any of these projects, and none of the. Uh, sites in question are anywhere near any projects I'm involved in, so just wanted to make that statement.
Great, thank you. And are there any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in the proceedings? Seeing none, please proceed.
All right, um, with that, can I get a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number forty-seven oh five, amending the zoning classification of certain real property between. Located on the west side of Road seventy-six between Terror Ray Court and Queen B Court. Pasco Franklin County, Washington, from RS dash twelve residential suburban to R one, low density residential. And further authorized publication by summary only.
Uh, it looks like council will place though.
Okay.
All right, do we have any, uh, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, uh, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. We'll move on to item nine B, also quasi judicial. Mister Ferguson, do you wanna kick us off with the, the wonderful stump speech or?
Sure, yeah, I can, uh.
Might as well just get it out of the way.
Exactly, see if, uh, uh, see how Mr. Gonzalez likes to follow me, so, uh, the, um. No, uh, same thing, uh, the same thing, appearance fairness applies, uh, the, uh, the five considerations, uh, related to demonstrated bias. Uh, direct or indirect financial interest, whether there's been a prejudgment of the issues. Uh, whether there's been ex parte contact or any other conflict that a council member believes would prevent them from hearing the matter fairly and impartially. So any council member with any of these concerns or disclosures, now would be the time to make those known. Seeing none, and any member of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council from participating in proceedings, also none.
All right, turn it over to you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor and members of council, and again on the screen are the requirements, uh, based on the PMC for which rezones are evaluated against. And, um, on the next slide is the, uh, review of the process as well, and on the next slide is the, uh, uh, rezone application itself. So the applicant here is requesting a rezone from ROS, RS twelve to R four. Uh, the property is located at thirty-two sixteen and thirty-three twenty, Road sixty-eight. This is located just northwest of the Road sixty-eight and Argent, uh, intersection. Uh, the two properties combined for approximately, uh, two point one eight acres. The comprehensive plan land use is mixed residential, commercial. Um, a public hearing was conducted on December thirteenth and received a recommendation of approval from the hearing examiner. Um, staff did receive one letter from the, uh, one letter from the public, um, that was shared with the hearing examiner. Uh, consisting of nearby household expressing concerns about potential traffic. Um, this is a non-project proposal, is strictly a request for a rezone. And, uh, if a, uh, project or permit is submitted on the subject properties. Um, then those, uh, permits or applications would be evaluated per the, uh, requirements of Pasco Municipal Code and any environmental, um, review as well. Um, also wanted to mention on this site in particular that, uh, recently, actually on April of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the site was subject to a public hearing and recommendation of approval from the Pasco City Council. Approving the comprehensive plan land use amendment to its current land use of mixed residential and commercial, which was adopted via ordinance four six five zero. Uh, staff concurs with the hearing examiner recommendation and findings and, um, adds that the request is consistent with the adopted. Uh, Pasco Comprehensive Plan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any, uh, questions, comments before we get to a motion? Uh, seeing that, I do wanna just reiterate one thing you said, which is we are approving a zoning, uh, ordinance here, a decision on what the zoning. Can and will be. We're not approving a particular project. There's what's kind of theoretically in the packet. Uh, so anyone that's out there in the chambers or in the ether that is listening or paying attention. Again, this isn't project specific, this is just what could be. And so, uh, to the extent that people hear this and read this, have questions, it's, it's what may or may not be. But we're just allowing a potential use, uh, so with that, um, of course, as Mr. Milley drinks, I'll let you swallow. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four seven oh six, amending the zoning classification of certain real. Property located on lot, at lots one and two of Short Platt eighty-one dash eighty-two, Pasco Franklin County, Washington. From RS twelve residential suburban to R four, high density residential and further authorized publication by summary only.
Second.
Thank you, we got a motion in a second, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously, thank you. We'll move on to item number C, so, uh, the two of you can either duke it out or, you know, Rochambeau for it, Mister Ferguson, you just wanna kick us off?
Yeah, I'll just get it out of the way, uh, the, uh, same, this is the appearance fairness doctrine applies to this as a quasi judicial matter. Uh, and all council members should consider whether they have a demonstrated bias, uh, direct or indirect financial interest. Uh, any prejudgment of the issues prior to this hearing, uh, or whether there's been any ex parte contact than one other than staff. Uh, so, or any other conflict that council member believes would prevent them from hearing this matter fairly and impartially. Any council member having these concerns or disclosures, uh, would, uh, now's the time to make those known. Seeing none, and any members of the public seeking to disqualify a member of council. Seeing none.
Okay, Mr. Gonzalez, I should have actually, uh, read it out loud. So it is item C, ordinance number four seven zero seven. Which is Welch rezone from RS twelve to R one. From there, you can kick it off, sir.
Uh, thank you and good evening again, Mayor and members of council. Uh, this is a rezone request for a parcel located on West Henry Street. Uh, between Road forty-two and Road forty-four, and just like the other, uh, applications, they're all subject to evaluation against the, uh. Pasco Municipal Code, um, this is a non-project item as well. Um, the applicant here is requesting a rezone from RS twelve to R one. Uh, the Pasco Comprehensive Plan designated this property with a low density residential land use. A, uh, public hearing was conducted on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three and, uh, received a recommendation with findings of approval. From the Pasco hearing examiner, uh, no public comments. Uh, were received, either opposing or supporting the rezone, uh, staff concurs with the hearing examiner findings and recommendation. And notes that the, uh, request is consistent with the adopted, uh, Pasco Comprehensive Plan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Any questions or comment of council before we move on to a motion? Seeing none, Mr. Milley.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number. Try to get the right one here, uh, yes. I move to adopt ordinance number forty-seven oh seven, amending the zoning classification of certain real property located on the south side of. West Henry Street between Road forty-four and Road forty-two, Pasco Franklin County, Washington. From RS twelve residential suburban to R one, low density residential and further authorized publication by summary only.
Second.
All right, I got a motion in a second by Mister Harpster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Hearing none, this also passes unanimous, unanimously. Um, with that, we'll move on to item, uh, item D, which is resolution number four four two one, change order num-. Change orders number twenty-eight through thirty-six for the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Uh, interim director Sarah, uh, is going to have.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For this item, uh, we will have Michael Alman, our contracted senior engineer. Who's been supporting the city with some project management duties. who's been supporting the city with some project management duties. Uh, tell us about this change orders.
Thank you, Maria. You look good over at that table too, by the way. Uh, Mayor, Council, thank you guys for having me tonight. Really appreciate the opportunity to come talk to you about the Lewis Street Overpass Project. Uh, tonight, as we go through this, uh, obviously, we're gonna talk about some change orders that you guys are aware of. Um, on the way to that, though, we're gonna talk a little bit about um the project, how it's doing, kinda where it's headed. Uh, and then ultimately kinda where we are going uh as we close this thing out and get a bridge built and get cars using it. So since there's some new members on council here, uh, I wanted to bring up kinda some general project elements. Um, I believe most of you are aware of it, but the project itself has a six hundred and twenty five foot bridge on it over the uh main rail yard for BNSF. As part of that, uh, there's over a mile of girders on the project, which are the main support beams for it. Uh, over nine hundred thousand pounds of rebar. Uh, there's a seventy foot bridge, uh, which in and of itself is a relatively large structure. A fifty five thousand square feet of walls, forty thousand cubic yards of wall backfill. Uh, thirty five thousand yards of columned barrow, that's material being brought in. A lot of that's gonna fill the underpasses. Uh, it's abandoned. Four thousand tons of HMA or asphalt and about sixty five hundred square yards of sidewalk. Uh, if you are in the construction industry, you look at those numbers and these are all very large numbers. So this is a big project, it's complicated in a really old area of Pasco. So these are a couple pictures that I took about two weeks ago on the project. Um, if you've had the opportunity to drive by, you've obviously seen some changes uh in the last couple of weeks. Uh, it's exciting that it's actually coming together and these aesthetic pieces to it really give the uh character of the bridge. So, in the picture on the left, uh, that's a picture from up on the bridge, that's one of the pedestrian paths. Uh, that is wall, a bunch of the of BNSF uh railroad fences being put up. Um, since then, you'll see light standards that are up and even some of the aesthetic pieces that are starting to show up there. On the right side, that's just a picture of some of the barrier, um, that's from the west side of of the project looking up towards the the bridge. As you get out there and um, I hope you guys have the opportunity in the not-too-distant future to get out there and see it. Uh, but it is a really impressive structure. So, kind of a general overview of the of the schedule on the project. So the groundbreaking ceremony was way back in June fourth of twenty twenty one. Uh, the contractor began work on August thirtieth of twenty twenty one. Uh, it's a four hundred working day contract originally. Uh, since then, there have been a hundred and seventy nine days added to the project for a total of five hundred and seventy nine, as we sit today. Uh, the bridge will open for vehicles. Um, it is not actually March twenty twenty four, it'll be April twenty twenty four, so I apologize for that on here. Um, that's anticipated and as you guys may know, you also use this as a little bit of a public service announcement, that there's gonna be a closure of Lewis Street beginning on Monday. Uh, that's the twenty sixth and that'll be an eight-week period that is anticipated for that closure. Uh, at the uh end of that, cars will be on Lewis Street Overpass, which will be pretty exciting. Uh, the substantial completion date for the project is around July of this year. Uh, that moves every time that there are um weather days and things like that that we've had over the winter. But that's the right timeline of it and then um the actual physical completion of the project will be uh closer to the October timeline out there. Uh, underpass demolition is anticipated in the uh first quarter of twenty twenty five and that is an item that we'll we we will talk about a little bit later in this. So jumping into the change orders, twenty eight through thirty six. Um, if you guys want, feel free to chime in, ask me questions as I'm going, or alternatively, at the end, we can address any questions you may have on any one of these items. Change order twenty eight, uh, we're calling the thickened edge treatment. So essentially, this adds about a hundred and eighty feet of pedestrian guardrail that wasn't originally anticipated but is needed out there. Because of how that and the location of that uh guardrail, it needs to be placed on the back of a panel of sidewalk. And sidewalk in and of itself isn't thick enough for the bolts that go down to mount that in place. As a result of that, we need a thickened back edge to it in order to have enough concrete to essentially create a foundation for that guardrail. Um, so back of sidewalk for the thickened edge and the additional guardrail portions of it, the cost is nineteen thousand seven hundred and ninety two dollars and sixty four cents. Change order twenty nine is a revised joint utility trench. So this revises trench locations to accommodate many different utilities that are out here on the project. As you can imagine, in a major corridor like this, there's a lot of different entities that have uh services out there, Charter Lumen, FPUD, uh, more than just that even. We coordinated at the onset of the project with all of these utilities, however, things have changed over time. So with that, we are constantly working with them out there, uh revising this, basically to make sure that on the back end of this, we don't have to come in and let anybody cut up the road. There's a pavement moratorium that Pasco has and so part of our effort is to work with all these utilities, coordinate as much as we can, um ultimately providing the uh utilities to the citizens of Pasco. It also added some transportation costs for some utility vaults. Um, as part of the partnering on the project, the city of Pasco has worked with Franklin PUD to provide uh Franklin PUD is actually providing the utility vaults for the contractor on the project to install. Um, that happens with a lot of different materials and here with the utilities will provide it, uh, and then the contractor Cascade Bridge in this case is the one that's actually installing it. Um, and for that, we had uh um had some issues with getting the vaults onsite in a timely fashion and so it's a relatively small amount in this cost, but we are paying the contractor to drive to Franklin PUD's site, load those and then bring them back to the uh to the project. The total cost associated with that is six thousand eight hundred and ninety five dollars. Change order thirty is related to infiltration trenches. Um, some of the council members may remember a uh area at Second and Lewis where there is a basement constructed underneath a portion of the sidewalk. Uh, this is directly related to that. The original intent there was to put an infiltration facility, uh, what would have been under the sidewalk. However, with the uh building essentially having a basement in that area, uh, we evaluated the risks associated with that and determined that it would be better to move that facility. So essentially what this pays for is additional pipes, some additional excavation to move that infiltration facility to a different location. Total costs associated with that are three thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and eighty one cents. Change order thirty one is a revised irrigation plan. It relocates and upsizes some of the surface lines for the planners between the bridges. Uh, provides conduit and irrigation uh for the irrigation, actually routing up the SEW walls um and some minor revisions associated with that. Uh, the total proposed change order amount for that is four thousand seven hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty five cents. Change order thirty two is a revised Franklin PUD trench. This is separate than the previous uh utilities trench that was discussed in change order uh number twenty five, I'm sorry, excuse me, twenty nine. Uh, this trench is specific to Franklin PUD, who's been a great partner on this project. Um, essentially with all the moving around on the project, uh, with utility poles, we needed to extend the trench to a different pole than originally planned in the design documents. So the material was provided by Franklin PUD, again, is kind of our partnering agreement with them to help keep costs down on it. Uh, and then the project contractor is installing that and extending that a little bit further. Uh, most of the costs associated with this were basically revised or uh restoring the road after this trench has been extended. So things like, you know, small portions of sidewalk as this trench goes through, uh, backfill, new pavement, things like that. The total proposed cost of this is ten thousand four hundred and eighty seven dollars and fourteen cents. Change order thirty three is extra survey cost. This one's fairly straightforward. Uh, there was just a um a station in offset, which is essentially where a catch basin goes relative to the road, that was just identified incorrectly on the plans. So it was installed um about three feet off from the actual location. Um, it was recognized by the contractor who brought it up, said, hey, this doesn't seem right. So um reevaluated and that's an item that uh they basically had to mobilize their survey crew to come back out and recalculate some points and restake some things. Change order thirty four is paper joints um on the west side of the project. So essentially, the west side, some of the um pavement that is over there currently, when the phase one A traffic control went in um before the winter, the decision was made not to place both lifts of asphalt at that time, um, rather to place one of the lifts and then these paper joints, which are essentially temporary joints that are put in, um, would allow traffic to run on the base lift as opposed to the wearing course. And then eventually um transition back down to the existing uh existing underpass. Um, the reason for this is when you place the final lift, that's the final thing we're gonna see out there on the project and with about nine months of construction activity that's gonna happen on it, you get a lot of wear and tear on it. Um, and so for a relatively small amount, you get quite a bit more life out of your pavement. So the proposed change order amount for that is three thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Change order thirty five is additional sealant. Uh, this is on some of those panels that go over the BNSF structure. So during the fabrication of that, the fabricator reached out with a request for information, basically saying that they believed that an additional coating um should be applied in order to provide longevity to these panels. Uh, it's a urethane-based sealer um that basically provides additional corrosion resist- resistance at all of the weld locations out there. Um, welds are treated basically around the border of these panels, um, which is forty eight total and that amount is for fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty seven dollars and ninety eight cents. The final change order tonight is the phase one B traffic control. Uh, this covers additional traffic control signage and devices to accommodate the traffic control phasing. Um, the ultimate result of this uh traffic control will be to have traffic on the new roadway alignment. So this is essentially what's gonna go to in place starting Monday. Um, there's a variety of signs and things like that that were not originally identified in in the bid documents. The total uh proposed change order amount associated with this is twenty seven thousand one hundred and thirty three dollars and twenty eight cents. So it's a budget discussion. Um, the project obviously has had some challenges. There's no, no doubt about that here. Uh, the original contract was about twenty two point three million. There's been about three point seven million dollars of change orders to date. The proposed change orders tonight total about ninety two thousand dollars. Uh, there will be a forthcoming ordinance to um address the budget, um, but that is uh not with us tonight. So talking about kinda where we're going, what are the, what are the major remaining efforts here? Well, we're gonna open the bridge to traffic, so that's planned um sometime in the April timeframe. Even when that happens, there will still be some pedestrian improvements along the corridor. Uh, what we're call- calling the existing Lewis line, um, if you, council, if you've had the chance to be out there, you'll see that near Second, uh, the roadway basically moves to the north onto the new bridge alignment. However, the um existing portion, which on the bottom picture here is to the right, on the upper picture, be kind of in the top left of it, um, there'd be a linear park down in that area um and quite a bit of pedestrian facilities that are constructed down there. So that work remains. Um, there will be just adjacent roadway portions, so at first, second, intersection improvements, things like that. Uh, there will be construction still happening um into the uh into the summer for sure. Uh, there's quite a bit of historical coordination to happen. As uh we close the underpass on the twenty sixth, uh, we will have a historical photographer on site to take some pictures of the underpass to document the condition of it, things like that. Um, there will also be two segments of the barrier as you enter into the uh underpass that are gonna be harvested, pulled aside and are planned to be used and uh in the future to build some sort of uh something to basically remember the existing underpass. The two segments that'll be used um have the original date stamps on them from the construction of the underpass from the nineteen thirties. So that'll be a cool piece of history that eventually can get incorporated into um kind of a memorial for the underpass. And then removal of the BNSF underpass, and this is one of the biggest items that I wanna bring to your attention tonight. We've been coordinating with BNSF on this and very late in the project here, they have let us know about some very large anticipated costs that they expect to be reimbursed for. Upwards of about two and a half million dollars. It's unanticipated at the time of bid. Um, I've been in every one of those meetings with BNSF and this was not something that was ever identified, even discussed. Um, and so we've been working uh very hard to identify different funding sources and things like that, um, cuz this is a large number and it's something that I don't think the budget's in a position to take right now. So uh, it's not part of the current contract, but it is something that is related to the underpass contract uh with BNSF. Uh, they want it removed within about six months of completion of the project, which would put it at about a year from now that they'd like it removed. Uh, so we are constantly working with them um related to these efforts, but I do want council to be aware that there are some challenges and things like that that we are addressing on this project. Are there any questions?
Uh, I see council member Harpster.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, appreciate the presentation and um appreciate the ongoing efforts with BNSF as they wrote us. Um, so realizing that the total amount of all the changes this evening is essentially nothing, it represents zero point three five percent of the entire project. Um, that does, given the uh, the, all the change orders combined, that's now seventeen percent of the total project costs and change orders, is that uh typical of projects similar to this? I know there's not really been a project similar to this in Pasco, but generally speaking for public works projects, is seventeen percent um anything that gives you cause for concern, or is that just kinda coming with the territory, especially on a, on a project like this?
Yes, sir, that's a, that's a loaded question. But, but I'll try and give you as direct of an answer as I can. Um, seventy percent's higher than you'd like to see on a project. But the area that we're dealing with is is incredibly unique. Um, you know, steam tunnels, um I mean, just buried foundations, things like that. I mean, there, there have been an incredible number of challenges on this, on this project that our team has been working really tirelessly to mitigate. Um, but, you know, to to give you a really direct answer, seventeen percent is is notably higher than than I'd like to see on a project like this. Um, a lot of those costs, though, have been um have truly been unanticipated. Typically subsurface related issues that are just unknown and you know, we mitigate every way we can, but at the end of the day, you know, a lot of these have have obviously turned into to real change orders. Uh, we take this really seriously for the citizens of Pasco cuz we recognize that, you know, these projects, if these take money from somewhere else, that's something else that isn't getting built.
I appreciate that answer and and um, you know, you're right, it's a very unique project and so now fear it if on, on any given project, you could expect ten percent, then seventeen percent is probably fair, given just the amount of anomalies with this project. Um, the last question, is there a ribbon cutting planned for when this is eventually opened?
Yes, uh, both engineering, not the Department of Fun, and the Department of Fun will be uh planning some events in the future for both the when the, when the opening's ready.
I just asked cuz I think it'd be um go a long way in inviting previous council members, especially those that served a long time, like Matt Watkins, Rebecca Francic. Um, I mean, when I was in high school, this project was being discussed and wasn't that long, it was fifteen years ago. And so I recognize there's only, you know, three council members up here that have anything to do with this project. And there's a couple who were on this council for a long time that um I think definitely deserve to be recognized, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mister Harpster. Mister Grim.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, I guess my question, it goes along with what council member Harpster said. I mean, the, the change orders we're looking at tonight are pretty insignificant compared with, you know, what, what we've seen in the past and everything, but of course, looking at that bill down the road of two point five million dollars just projected for, you know, filling in the underpass. And I'll be honest with you, a lot of my questions did get answered this week, not about this project, but just about change orders in general. Thank you, Assistant City Manager and Inarm Director Sarah for um working with me on that. But um, you know, it's hard, you know, we build this thing, but how does, I mean, just from the public's point of view, how does, you know, um, you know, engineers or staff or whoever it is kinda not look over at the underpass and say, well, what are we gonna do with this when it's all done and, you know, all of a sudden have all that, you know, money and that's just that's a And you know, all of a sudden have all that, you know, money and that's just, that's a lot of money for, you know, somebody to swallow. That seems to be a big part of the project. What are we gonna do with this when it's all over?
I can give you a little bit of historical context on this too. So the original plan with this was to leave the structure. The, what we call the cap of the structure, um, you know, if you directly the underpass, the roof of it, was to leave that in place. So we coordinated with, um, I started working on the project in mid twenty nineteen, um, June of twenty nineteen. So we're still meeting with BNSF on this. We had identified that and our plans, worked through them with everything. And during the hundred percent, um, there's a series of back and forth, as you can imagine, with, with plans that affects their property. So at the hundred percent review, the very last comment in there was, by the way, remove the underpass to six feet below grade. And so, just only comment on there. And so we reached out to him like, what do you mean? We've been talking about this for, you know, predates me by, by many years. But we've been talking about this and to bring this up now is, thi- this is a huge effort. You know, have the old plans for this, it, it's complicated. So BNSF basically said, well, here's the deal. If you wanna move forward with this project, you have one of two things. You can either decide to accommodate, or if you actually wanna get this engineered ahead of time, you need to plan to push this project out two to four years. And so the decision was, was made with the city of, well, we're gonna have to do it. Cost escalations for the next two to four years um, is, is real. So we're gonna push forward with this and we anticipated something closer to a half million dollar cost associated with this. What they've essentially came back and said is there's a track switch within this area. And anytime you affect a track switch, they will take that out. And that's about one point three million dollars of that overall cost. Which was something never discussed, never identified. Um, I personally was the one that was having the meeting with BNSF. And, and rail pros uh, not so long ago, having that discussion and had a difficult time formulating questions based on that of, how could? How could BNSF possibly have a two million dollar bill associated with this? But, I mean, they're the railroad and they say, this is what you're gonna do if you wanna do this on our property. So, um, you know, my job is to, and our team's job really is to adapt to this and figure out how to get. Funding to pay for this, you know, and minimize cost to the city.
Thank you, and that was gonna be my last comment. I appreciate staff trying to find other resources so we don't, yeah. Um, drop a bomb on the budget, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you answered most of my questions and you worded my question uh, very well. So going through the motions, through the change orders here really, um, there's at least I've identified possibly two. Three change orders that should have been, I feel should have been considered. Um, at the initial survey, at the initial design of this project, yes. Uh, anticipating that there's gonna be, it's normal to have change orders uh, for such a huge project. Um, but the revision of, you know, the joint utility trench, was that not included in, in the original design? The thickening uh, of the edge treatment, again, it's, it should have been included in the initial design. Um, you know, uh, I, I guess no real question, other than. Where did we fail with the initial design and anticipating that there was gonna be change orders? But we're now at change order number thirty-six. Um, you know, just, just uh, trying to get some questions answered. I don't know if the question's directed to you, to staff in general. Uh, but just uh, making sure that we're holding ourselves accountable to the, to the citizens, to the people that are watching these meetings. And the people that are gonna use that, that overpass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Uh, Mr., did you have anything in response to those comments? You know, I, all I would say to that is um, w- we take these very seriously, we really do. Um, and uh, the contractor uh, who, who I know is watching this tonight. Um, I think would tell you the same thing that, you know, there's no point at which we just say, yeah, okay, it's extra cost. You know, we, we go through these um, very detailed to ensure that, you know, if it is a real cost. You know, we have, we have a plan set that was bid on this project and we can't change that. So with that, you know, are these real change orders or are they not? Um, and that's really important to us, you know, to hold, have accountability and that's why I got the opportunity to come talk with you guys tonight.
Thank you. And thank you. Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, obviously the two point five million is very distressing um, to hear about this. Did uh, I mean, what's BNSF's point if it doesn't get done within six months? I mean, is there gonna be like a lawsuit if it's not done within this timeframe or?
You know, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you exactly what they, what they would intend to do on that. Um, I think contractually they would say that, you know, they could do it themselves and then assess that cost to the city. Um, how that works out, I would have to uh, punt to Mr. Ferguson on, on what that would, might look like with, with BNSF, but.
Sorry, I missed a question there.
No, just saying that, yeah, I mean, how, how does this work out with BNSF if.
Oh, sure.
The structure isn't, isn't taken out. Um, you know, and I think our contract does say they can, they can do it, assess that to the city. Um, I suspect the city wouldn't go quiet, quietly on that either though. You know, and so that's, that's not our, that's not our intent and our intent really is to um, hunt down some additional funding for this. Which um, especially with, with Maria at the helm, um, she's been very successful doing that. So we anticipate keeping that alive and doing that again here.
Okay, well, I do appreciate that. Uh, I don't know if you know this, but maybe, or maybe you do know it. But uh, in nineteen, was it thirty-three is when the underpass was?
We've thirty-nine is.
I mean, did the city have to pay to put it underneath the railroad tracks then? I mean, is that not the city's right to have that? And then, I mean.
I can't tell you the financial arrangement that, that existed then. There is an easement that existed with BNSF for that. But as part of the new overpass going over, a condition of that is abandoning the existing underpass easement. Uh, with the exception of there would be a new waterline utility easement through there for some stuff that's going through the tunnel. Um, but I, I can't tell you the specifics of what that arrangement was and quite honestly, the documentation from that time, as you can imagine, is. Marginal at best, you know, we do have, we do have the construction drawings from it, but that's about the most information that we do have from it.
Okay, and then I guess the last one thing, I mean, obviously I realize they, they want it gone, but wasn't there talk that this was like a historical. Structure and that it should be preserved with like put in gravel or is that, they just don't care about that whole concept or?
No, I, if, I believe if you talk to BNSF, they would say it's more of a security concern than anything else and that, you know, underpasses are. Are non-typical for uh, for railroad crossings anymore, you know, great separation projects are almost exclusively. Um, bridges unless you have some unique space constraints, so. Um, the end of the day, BNSF um, doesn't really care what we think on a lot of stuff when they. Ultimately, when they say, you know, you're gonna take it out, um. That's typically what you end up doing and we, don't get me wrong, I mean, we don't go silently on a lot of this stuff. Where, you know, I had a relatively uncomfortable conversation with them this morning on this stuff, so it isn't a. Um, it isn't our team just saying, okay, we'll do whatever you want, but, but there are contractual ramifications of it. And when you're building something over railroad property, uh, ultimately the railroad, typically the railroad gets their way.
Okay, I guess, call me, I mean, I do, I have a fascination with trains and so I do love trains, but I would just say it's. To me, it's frustrating that it seems like we're doing them a favor by taking it out. And if the bridge was to, or the underpass was to collapse, it seems like that would hurt their operations immensely. And yet they're charging us all this money to take out something that is a risk for them, not a risk for us. So I would just say it's a, to me, it seems like a bad partnership when we're expected to foot the bill at something that would.
Yeah, partnership's a strong word, I would uh, so, but I, I, I agree with you entirely, sir. I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Milne, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I know we've talked a lot about this for a couple of months now. I know it says twenty-six mil, but. I wanna say that we've gotten funding and to pay for a lot of this, haven't we? To kinda, so I guess, I, I mean, this is, the number on the paper really doesn't reflect what we really, what it's covering. So I, I would like to know that, so the public knows that. Um, that's the reason why I'm kind of, you know, I mean, I was calling this the money street overpass. So, um, you know, I kinda got, you know, I, I kinda went away from criticizing it because. Uh, the staff is doing a good job of getting money and so I think it's probably good to like put, put it out there that, you know, we've covered a lot of these costs. And this today is really a small portion and, and really just talk about, I mean, what the biggest issue was the structural earth wall, right, design. And so a lot of people are not unaware, are probably unaware of that because it was so long ago when you came up here and you talked about it. So, I, I, I mean, that's kinda where, you know, it, it, you know, rubber hits the road on that. But I, like I said, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we've gotten a lot of funding to kinda cover those, those costs. So maybe contrast that with what the contingency will probably was on the job and, you know, I, I don't make it, probably give us too much heartburn, so.
Yeah, just to speak to that briefly, uh, the city has got roughly seven million dollars into the project. And the remainder of that is uh, is grants and um, from connecting Washington and also TIB. So those are the two biggest funding sources for this, so. And I could give you, get you an exact breakdown if, if you need, but in, again, in rough numbers, there's about s- seven million of city contribution related to this project.
Thank you. Well, I see no need to ask any of the same questions or have the same discussion. Appreciate you coming forward. But I do think uh, Mr. Brown is kinda puts the bow on the discussion, which is, and, and, and you did very well. Um, the overwhelming majority of this is not paid for by city money. That doesn't mean that we should be. Wasteful with resources uh, that were granted. Um, or, or whatever financial arrangement we have and certainly to the extent that we can push back on other parties. We appreciate the efforts there and, you know, we still have our rights uh, where they're applicable, so. I think um, the bottom line is this is necessary. It wasn't just a beautification project. Um, we had some serious concerns with the existing underpass. Unfortunately, we're getting charged for additional work on that same underpass, but that's. And to your point, that's, that's where we are with the railroad, so appreciate the conversation. I think with that, uh, let's uh, make a motion, Mr. Milne.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approves, approve resolution number four four two one, authorizing the city manager to execute change orders. Numbers twenty-five through thirty-six to the, oh, twenty-eight, I'm sorry, twenty-eight to thirty-six to the construction contract. With Cascade Bridge LLC for the Lewis Street Overpass Project.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Harpster. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you for your time. With that, we'll move on to item E, resolu- yeah, I'm not skipping one. Resolution number four four two two, interlocal agreement cable bridge LED lighting system, deputy city manager, Satan. Please take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, I have some updates on last week's presentation. Um, that we um, had shared about cable bridge illumination project. Um, essentially uh, modernization and enhancement of uh, the lighting system for the bridge. We also have a president and CEO of uh, Visit Tri-Cities, Kevin Lewis, in the audience. And he can help me answer any of your inquiries. This uh, modernization and enhancement and illumination of the, of the bridge. Um, this project was led by Tri-City River Shore Enhancement Council, TREC. Um, and it is a program of Visit Tri-Cities, uh, and it is a subcommittee made up of local jurisdictions like Washtot. Uh, PUDs and community members that are leading the charge to get collaboration between jurisdictions to complete. Essentially the first step to get the effort started, which is this interlocal agreement. Uh, something very similar was done in nineteen ninety-eight, uh, which I've shared uh, with council. Um, and um, I, I also wanna share that City of Kennewick and Pasco helped maintain the bridge. While Washtot uh, owns the bridge um, overall. Uh, there is a community member participation on this effort to raise the funds um, to beautify this bridge. Uh, and make it a landmark for the community. There is also a river shore master plan that I think is um, helpful to talk about, which was created in twenty twelve. Uh, which uh, TREC is using as uh, its guiding principle. Some of their goals, um, and this is not a complete list, includes things like. Uh, enhance linkages to and from the river shore across the river and through historical downtowns. And inland destinations and opportunity areas, enliven the river shore with formal and informal programming. Integrate and interpret arts, culture, commerce, heritage and environmental features. Create place through viewpoints, seating areas and user amenities. And en- enhance water oriented activities and recreation in the area. And so this is the, the goal of um, of the subcommittee, TREC. Uh, and um, essentially the cable bridge, given that it's already a landmark in the community. The proposal um, to council is to um. A- approve for a funding of twenty-five thousand that could go up to thirty-seven and a half thousand uh, for a design effort. After which, um, we would um, be essentially selecting the design effort based on. Um, on the criterias, on safety, uh, traffic safety, uh, easy to use. I'm sure um, uh, there's a lot of other components that I probably cannot speak intelligently on. Uh, and after that, um, we would get a clear idea of what the construction cost would be to actually accomplish that. Which at this time is estimated to be a two, two million dollar effort, but uh, definitely not something that we can say that for sure now. Uh, and then um, the plan is for the community to fundraise. Uh, and then um, chart the path forward after that. With that, I'm open to any questions that you might have, or I would say, Mr. Lewis is.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, with that, uh, Ms. Blaisdell.
Um, last week I asked a question regarding who was paying the electricity bill on this? Do we happen to, and will this save us money in the future?
Uh, it will definitely save money in the future. Um, it's a really straightforward question that you asked on who, who shares the electric bill. Um, I, I have done my research. It looks like uh, it is City of Pasco, but I'm not hundred percent sure on that. Uh, the bill is, ranges from five thousand to eight thousand dollars per year.
Per year?
Per year at this time, yes.
And do we know how this is, if we switch to the LED lighting, how much this could potentially save?
The, the standard out there in the, in the industry is by seventy-five percent. Usually the switch from these lights to LED reduces your uh, electric bill by about seventy-five percent.
And out of curiosity, is there a reason why the City of Pasco is only fitting that bill?
I'm not hundred percent sure that it is just the City of Pasco. It's looking like it and I'm continuing my research on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaisdell, uh, Mr. Harpster.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Lewis. Um, and thank you for coming this evening. So it, I'll just, there's only two questions, I'll just ask both and answer when you see fit. Um, one, how did this kinda come about um, in the beginning? And then two, what do fundraising efforts look like? Um, once we get to that point.
Right there, there it is, yes. Thank you, uh, Commissioner, Councilman Harpster for the question. Uh, thi- this is uh, you know, before my time when this all started. But um, I think the original idea of upgrading the lighting came from some prominent Pasco city members and also business members. Who wanted to revitalize, help revitalize the downtown area and, and the traffic to Pasco and, and saw this in other communities. As something that really made it, y- you know, an impact on that. Uh, there's, there's multiple communities that have done bridge lighting projects like this, and so that's where this whole thing started. They brought it to the TREC committee, which is a committee that we facilitate. And Visit Tri-Cities is, is, is more of a convener and a facilitator. We're not leading the charge on, on these efforts. But we're facilitating that as these, as these initiatives get brought, uh, forward to our group. Uh, and again, that TREC committee has representation from the ports, the cities and, and throughout the community. So it's, it's a, you know, it's a broad-based organization and, and considering a- anything to do with river shore enhancement. So tha- that's where that came from and, and originated. Hector, do you know the initial, and I, Hector's here with me and he, he actually is our uh. You know, our representative on the, on the TREC committee and so he might have some, some more detail to that.
Yeah, uh, as, as Mr. Lewis said, uh, it's just a, you know, Visit Tri-Cities with, uh, it's a pro- TREC is a program of Visit Tri-Cities. So that's where that uh, we, we act as a true convener uh, with all the nine jurisdictions uh, in the Tri-Cities region.
Uh, in the Tri-Cities region, uh, that includes port districts, cities, uh, so I can name them all, uh, City of Kennewick, uh, City of Pasco. Uh, City of West Richland, uh, City of Richland. And then you have uh, the two port, uh, the port districts, Port of Kennewick, Port of Benton, uh, Port of Pasco. And then you have Franklin County and Benton County, all all part of this Trek uh, committee, the Trek Council. And so when these uh, when these uh, residents and business owners came to us, uh, we felt that. Uh, that would be a good mechanism to uh, to really uh, collaborate together and uh, we've we've helped. Initiate other programs such as the community wayfinding through Trek, you see all the signage going across the whole region, that's done through the Trek Committee. The lowering of the levees, of course, you know, doing that across the whole region, you're working on both sides of the river shore. So it it takes a group like that, when you're working with that many jurisdictions uh, to to come together, so that's why we're using that. Uh, we're we're coming together through the the Trek Council.
Thank you for that, so fundraising, my my worry is we commit twenty-five thousand dollars to this and then. Uh, fundraising efforts don't go how we're hoping and then a year or two from now that you guys come back and need, you know, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, or whatever, so what what does that plan look like and um? What would the potential future ask be of us if fundraising didn't go as anticipated?
Yeah, I I think it's a great, a great question, I I think we're a little premature maybe on understanding that, the 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 discussion. With the Trek Committee and the and the organizations involved was that we needed to get an engineer involved. And a consultant to to put those plans together and and determine exactly what was needed, how it's gonna go about and how how it's gonna function. Uh, so that we could then go out to do the the fundraising, um, but I think there's this, you know, there's strong support from the community. Um, that I've seen, um, and I think there's some grants and opportunities too, and I I've also seen in those meetings, you know, uh, Washtot's. You know, interested in this as well, and so I I think there may be some, you know, some opportunities to go out. And secure that funding in in a lot of different sources. Um, but I I I guess I don't have a specific answer, I don't know if you know any better on that, I think that's part of what this is about is uh. Getting some some money to see, you know, start this project from the the four organizations that are most most impacted by it. And and then moving the project forward with the consultant engineer.
I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, I got, I I probably don't go too far, um, because we got a handful of lights. Um, and I know I've got some questions, yep, are all your questions directed to these gentlemen or staff, Mr. Milley? Okay, well, go ahead and come on back up, uh, again, you may just want to stay up.
So, yeah, can you give us a kind of brief update of where like the current lighting equipment, you know, what kind of status it is, I know like. Out of my building, I had to change out some lights and I couldn't even get the light, so everything had to be. Uh, taken down and they said, well, if we try to find those lights from the eighties, it would cost you more, so just pull it all out and replace it, so can you get a. Give us an idea where we're at if say, we didn't do it and then lights, some of them went out, I mean, can you even get these? Can you elaborate on that a little bit? That's actually, that's gonna be part of the study, right, I'm no expert in lighting, um, but that's that's what, from what we've heard in discussions and the meetings that we have. It's been that the land, the the current lights are antiquated, right, so you're dealing with uh, over twenty-year-old uh, lighting system. And so getting it to energy efficiency, uh, energy efficient, energy efficient lighting is gonna be uh, critical to do that. Um, and then of course, uh, once you get these new lights, I know it's gonna create opportunities for. Uh, us to be able to uh, to have more access, to be able to change the colors of them. And then uh, we can, we we've seen other communities where they've ho- hosted festivals, they created economic impact based on this bridge, you'll see a good example is a. City of Portland, uh, in in Portland, Oregon, uh, they have a bridge there that uh, they have a a bridge light festival that uh, brings about. According to them is about two million dollars in economic impact just from that event from the a a lighting festival that they're able to host. Uh, so uh, as far as lighting, though, I I don't know too much, you know, I know Washtot has has attended some of our meetings and they said that they would help us in. In providing more of that technical information and support, um, we did get some uh, expertise also from an electrical. Uh, um, engineer as well to give us some just a very initial cost, which is where, why we estimate about two million dollars is what. Again, that's just a, uh, just in looking at it and getting that, um, a a very uh, high level look at it. That's where we got that estimate from was reaching out to uh, the electrical company. Okay, and I guess last question, maybe this be more directed towards staff, but if like currently if a light went out, do we have like extra reserves or? Or they, do we, do we know that, like, if say, like immediately, like the light went out tonight? To replace the whole unit, do we have reserves, does Pasco have the reserves or who has that or do we even have that equipment?
I I'm not sure if we have the equipment or additional bulbs or lights, but. Uh, it is definitely the responsibility of Kennewick and Pasco to replace them and bring them up to um, to be functional. I I don't think that we have additional ones, I'm sure we go out and order them.
Okay, like I said, that's good, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Milley, Mr. Grim.
Thank you, you guys for coming tonight, I get, one of my lingering questions is, who's gonna be in charge of this? You know, who decides, you know, one of the things I highlighted here in our packet is support of various causes festivals, what you guys just brought up. Who decides what those are, sadly, so many things have become political these days that some of those causes. May not be reflective of one jurisdiction where they are the others, so who who gets to flip the switch, who's making that decision?
I I would, I would suggest that that is a uh, a decision that gets determined in this in this consulting phase. Um, to figure out the the ins and outs and who's and what's of how how they get turned on and what can be done and and all of that. And it would be the jurisdictions that would determine that, the jurisdictions that are, you know, at both ends of the bridge.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that would be one of my big questions is, yeah, who's gonna actually run this, who's gonna get to say yes? Who's gonna, you know, say no and, you know, those are really, you know, can be significant because. They're reflective of, you know, could be reflective of the community and just want to. You know, make sure that um, there are causes that people can feel good about and those kind of things and. You know, again, so some of those can be politically charged and, yes.
Yeah, I think I again, a great question, we we do see it as a great opportunity to showcase the area and the destination and get. Get a lot of attention through it, uh, bridges, I mean, it already is an icon in this community and. And there was an effort at one point to do, uh, you know, to to light it for a certain e- event and I think it. The cost was was pretty substantial, um, to create the gels and and all they were doing was shooting. Light up onto the bridge to create the color. These will give so much more flexibility with that, patterns and designs and different colors and shapes and whatever to to celebrate. You know, whether it's holidays or events, whatever, whatever we want to do, but some certainly some detail to come to terms with and and. And how that gets decided and, you know, what can and can't be done.
Thank you, yeah, and it sounds like this is kind of a catch twenty-two, we need to pay money to figure out some of the stuff, I honestly wish we kind of had just more time to. You know, marinate on this a little bit longer, so anyways, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor, I was just gonna make a comment that I I'm in total, you know, favor of this, I think we need uh, more community identifiers. And also just, I I've been a major supporter of the reconvenance of the river shore, I think that's the both cities, all three cities should have more. Ownership of, you know, Columbia Park and the river shore, um, get the core engineers out of the way. I I think this is a great thing, just to, again, it's it's an icon here in the community, um, we can have events like a cable bridge run at night, light it up. You know, you can have, you know, National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day with the lights and stuff like that, I think, I I think it's just really cool and and, but like. Um, Councilmember Grim said, yeah, I would like to know who's gonna be making those decisions about, you know, what are we celebrating and and stuff like that, but. No, I'm just, I'm in total support of this and uh, uh, don't get me wrong, two million dollars is a lot of money, but. I think you guys can uh, get that money from some of those, those big fat cats out there at Hanford and stuff, so I'm I'm not worried, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peralos, Ms. Peralos.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being here, Mr. Lewis, uh, Hector, good to see you again. Uh, so a lot of my questions have already been answered and that's why I kind of sort of wait till the end, because Peter here has all the good questions. Um, so just a final comment, I guess, as far as the events and as far as some of the participation from City of Pasco. We have a very, an excellent director of fun in his department of fun, Mr. Jesse Rice here, um. So my my question really is, um. Which other cities have already signed? Which other participants have already signed?
Yeah, currently you have a, excuse me, uh, City of Kennewick, uh, Port of Kennewick and Port of Pasco.
And then another question, um, what happens if we push this off for another, I don't know, another year?
We'd take it back to the subcommittee, so that's a committee consists of all the those four jurisdictions and the City of Pasco and so all four would. Just come back together and we'd see, you know, what the next steps are of how we can continue conversation without having an interlocal agreement signed. We just have to see what other, what other ways can we collaborate or see, see what our next steps are from there.
Right, and I'm just asking this, not because I'm against it, uh, I'm asking because we had someone come here earlier just talking about. You know, uh, uh, transparency, you know, the funds, right? We, you were here to listen to the change orders, again, uh, costing the city a lot of money. So, you know, just really pondering what it would be, what happens to this project if we push it off just a little bit.
Yeah, I think, uh, you you know, the key to what what we've had in the discussions that I've been in in the year that I've been here with this project is it just wasn't moving at all. It needed some buy-in and uh, without without some buy-in and without some ownership of the project, it wasn't gonna go anywhere. And and this was a way to to stimulate that, to show that the communities around and the and the ports were supportive of the. You know, by 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 putting some financial investment into it and saying, yeah, we want to get the answers to these questions. And and we're we're willing to put this money out and get these answers and get it put together to move it forward. If 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 we don't go forward with the interlocal agreement, I think it sits, I I I don't think it'll go very far, just, that's just my perspective from the conversations that I've been in. You know, it's not that it couldn't come around in a year and and get picked up again, maybe there's a better time for it, but I I think. In the year that I've been here, that's what I've seen is a lot, a lot of things like this just get talked about and talked about and talked about unless somebody. Steps forward and says, we're willing to, we're willing to move this thing forward a little bit, so.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Peralos, um, I see your light, I have a couple of comments and questions and then I'll get to you. Uh, kind of a tongue-in-cheek question, is there a cash prize option? I mean, you know, we're talking about money that. Other entities or individuals are potentially willing to allocate for the actual hard costs, I see we're up to thirty-seven-five. Potentially for the designs. Are they gonna offer us a refund or just give us the money to the City of Pasco, Port of Pasco and Kennewick, is that two million dollars gonna come, five hundred K to each head? Where where we would just get to spend it elsewhere? Or are these people who are in interested investing in this project, interested in investing in this project?
You know, I think that interest would come when when we reach out to them, we to know whether it's like, yeah, this or not, or something else, right? The the ask would be for the project, though, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
And I I I think that's kind of what I anticipated, right, is that it's not just, again, it's not. You know, we all see the H G T V thing, you don't get a two million dollar house or the million and a half dollars, right, if that's what our option is, get the house, then. We need to look at this as a holistic project. That our option is to have money allocated towards this project. Um, I guess my advice or comments would be, you've mentioned Washtot, you what mentioned other entities for grant funding. I'd like to see chased money for reimbursement of upfront costs, not only down the road. Say we spent twenty-five or thirty-seven-five, whatever it costs the cities and the ports. I would like to see that same effort put in getting us reimbursed so that we're fundamentally net out of pocket zero or close to. So I, if this moves forward, I'll give you that charge, that not only do you chase future looking dollars, but you uh. Get that rest re- retrospective dollars if possible, sometimes that's not possible, um, often not. But I don't know, I don't, I don't, this is a different, kind of a horse of a different color and we might have opportunities to get funds reallocated back. So I I just urge you to look, I'm not asking for an answer on that, just, I urge you to look into that if we do move forward.
Yeah, yeah, I think the the committee would be very open to that. Um, and I, you know, I I I know from other grants that we've worked out to a lot, in a lot of cases. In in order to get those grants, you have to have some money to match, and so this may be part of that bargaining chip as well. You've got, you know, you got a hundred thousand dollars that have already, has already been invested into this and that will help us get additional funds, so it could. Could go both ways, but you know, you know, certainly worth the ask, right?
Exactly, and I think just, you know, from from the responsibility of to our citizens, the extent that we can look at that. I know, again, it's not often that those funds are available, but. If they are, even for those folks that you're chasing in the community, maybe they'll be willing to allocate a reimbursement check, I don't know. I don't know what conversations have been had, but again, if we move forward, there may be opportunities to help reimburse the city so that. We've talked a lot about something that we're getting taken care of, so with that, back to Mr. Harpster.
Thank you, Mayor, um, I don't have more questions for you gentlemen, um, but um. Miss, the, you mentioned we're paying the bill on the current lights, do you know how much that is monthly or annually? And I apologize, you stated this already.
Oh, that's okay, it ranges from five thousand to eight thousand per year, so I would just use eight thousand.
Okay, I thought you said five hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand, I thought this is a great opportunity to get some other people to help us for gifts costs. Yeah, I um, I've probably spent way more time on this than twenty-five thousand dollar warrants. And I love percentages and I was looking at it as a percent of our budget and I don't really want to say what it is, but um. I just feel there's, there's too many unknowns for me to feel comfortable with it and um. It it's the simplest way I can put it, so.
Ms. Blaisdell, one more comment and then I'm gonna ask for Mr. Milley to make a motion.
I was all for this bef- before tonight, but learning what you told us, I guess, that we've been paying for it. And if there's an interlocal agreement, why are we paying for it and how long have we been paying for it? How many years have we been paying for this? I feel like we've already paid our twenty-five thousand, but um. I don't know, after learning what we learned tonight, I don't know if I'm necessarily a hundred percent in favor either.
I I would like to add that I have not confirmed with um, our other partners on that, um, it is from. Our research and kind of calling the electric companies, um, is is our judgment that we've been paying for it. Um, the I L A, uh, the interlocal agreement that was signed back in nineteen ninety-eight. Um, it speaks to the maintenance cost, but not to um, the the utility cost and so it's not as clear. Um, so I'm not quite sure, um, going back to the financial records, uh, we have a. We have had a new system in the last eleven years and so we're not quite sure. Where this practice started, so that's a research that we need to do as staff.
Can we postpone this, or do we have to live on it tonight?
If you'd like to make a motion to postpone, I mean, I guess that's a question for you all. Uh, does postponing this have any detriment to the project?
We we've been waiting, you know, for just to get it, getting getting the interlocal agreement signed so we can move forward, so it'll just uh, postpone that. There's not a set deadline that we're waiting for anything right now, um, other than, you know, I I think we just have people on the subcommittee that just wanna. Are eager to move forward on on going on to the next steps, but um, as far as a deadline, there's. There's nothing right now set that we need to have it by a certain time.
Okay, um, Councilmember Boras.
Thank you, just uh, thank you, Mayor, just a quick clarification, section four, ownership of improvements. The improvements, uh, according to this section states this uh, Washington State Department of Transportation. How much are they contributing?
Sorry, they're not part of this interlocal agreement, so at this point, they're they're not invested into.
However, they're still the owners of the project and improvement itself. Thank you for that clarification.
Um. I'm hearing various things across the board, we do need to make a motion, that we either uh. Could move to approve, reject or to postpone, so. Okay, uh, since we've noted a motion, we don't have a motion yet.
Has anyone made a motion?
No, we'll just close this out if we need to delay.
Uh, you you could do a motion to continue to uh, take certain, so um, I think March fifth is the next regular meeting.
I don't, but.
I'd make a motion that we push this out to March fifteenth.
No, no, March fifth, right?
Oh, wait, apparently I can't read a calendar, that's the fourth, apparently.
Okay.
March fourth.
I make a motion that we postpone this to March fourth, so we get the answers that we need so we can make a decision. I make a motion that we postpone this to March fourth, so we get the answers that we need so we can make a decision.
Okay, let's do a, um, roll call vote on this one, Miss Debbie.
All right, uh, councilmember Harpster.
No. No.
Thank you. All right, councilmember Peralas.
No.
Councilmember Boras.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimm.
No.
Councilmember Milney.
Yes.
And Mayor, um, Mayor Serrano.
No.
So, uh, the motion failed.
So, I'll hopefully entertain another motion. Do you have one, Mr. Harpster?
Sure, I move to reject resolution number four-four-two-two. Second.
Mr. Ferguson, are we adequate there on that motion?
That is one way to go, um, I was thinking you were gonna go the other way, but, uh, you can do that, sure.
Okay, um, so we got a motion and a second, I, do we have any discussion? If not, then I think we just kick it to the clerk for, let's do another voice. Mr. Ross, yeah.
Let me interrupt real quick, can we get clarification on the rejection?
Correct.
Is your light on intentionally, okay. With that, uh, Debbie, can you go ahead and do a voice vote on, on rejecting resolution number four-four-two-two is now where we are.
Yes, uh, councilmember Blaisdell.
No.
Councilmember Grimm.
Yes.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Peralas.
No.
Councilmember Boras.
No.
Um, Mayor Protem Milney.
No.
And Mayor Serrano.
No.
So, that does not pass.
So, now we're right back where we started.
Yep, so we've come full circle, assuming, um, at this point, we, I, I, I don't foresee a third option aside from what there is.
Yeah, you could, you could make the motion that's in the packet.
Yeah, no, I, no, I get that, I mean, as, aside from what's in the packet, so I will entertain a motion because I don't think we want it to die on the vine, Mr. Peralas.
I just wanna make sure, okay, um, I, I thought we were discuss, it seemed like we were gonna just make a motion to continue this.
So that failed on a four-three motion and then the rejection outright of this project, uh, failed on a five-two motion, I, I guess arguably you could try to resurrect somehow or, or do another motion to continue it, I just don't know whether or not the temperature's changed, it's not any hotter or colder to me.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of clarify, it seemed like we were gonna continue it, but then, you know, I'm, I'm obviously in favor of this, so, okay.
So with that, you, Ms. Ross.
I, I would have a suggestion to, for a motion, um, uh, if we can continue this, uh, we, we didn't agree on the March, uh, fourth date. Uh, so maybe a later date, is anyone open for further discussion on this?
I'll second that.
Can you pick a date and then we'll, before we second the motion that's not there? Or you just want it indefinitely?
Not indefinitely, let's pick a date, if March fourth doesn't work for a regular meeting, the eighteenth, Mr. Ferguson.
That's like Saint Patty's Day, we won't have a green bridge then.
The eighteenth or April first?
Is that confirmed by staff, those? Uh, the eighteenth, will that be our next? Yeah, thanks, sorry. Okay, uh, and then the next after that would be the April Fool's Day ironically, yeah, uh, I'll pick Ms. Boras, whichever.
And let's, let's shoot for April first, we can have further discussion, I think, you know, everything else on our plate would have kind of been sorted out, so I move that we, uh, move this discussion to April first.
Do we have any seconds on that?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Blaisdell, so, uh, motion by Ms. Boras, seconded by Ms. Blaisdell. Uh, Debbie, can you please, uh, Ms. Clerk, can you please?
Yes, all right, councilmember, um, Peralas.
Yes.
Councilmember Boras.
Yes.
Councilmember Blaisdell.
Yes.
Councilmember Grimm.
No.
Councilmember Harpster.
Yes.
Councilmember Milney, or I mean, Mayor Protem Milney.
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano.
No.
It passes, five to two.
Okay, then we will see this item hopefully for the last time on April first of twenty-twenty-four. I, I think, um, that my suggestion to this body is be very clear and direct with your needs. We've got substantial information since we've first seen this. We had, uh, folks on the board and board subcommittee who presented to us and taking their time. So, uh, to the extent we need additional information, let's be drilled down and just kind of move through, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, I just, the, uh, as I mentioned, there's a few unknowns for me to feel comfortable voting yes, and so I, I ran into Mr. Lewis at an event last week and, uh, he had offered to provide any information that we uh, may want to hear or know and, um, so I'll, I'll be reaching out with just some ideas and, and clarifications and whatnot, so. And thanks again for being here this evening.
Uh, Mr. Grimm, be extremely brief.
Yes, just. Totally understand, yep, just the leadership is kind of the lingering question for me, who's gonna control this, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, with that, we'll move on to item F, uh, table end this to April first. Uh, resolution number four-four-two-three, interagency with the Washington Traffic Safety Commission for the Law Enforcement Liaison Pro- Program. Thank you, gentlemen, in the back for waiting for us and thank you, gentlemen, in the back for, uh, joining us too, both sets.
Councilmembers, Mayor, Pasco team, thanks for having me. Lieutenant Decker, that's your Pasco Police Department, so while I'm here, I'm here to discuss the, uh, law enforcement uh, liaison with the Target Zero program, which is run by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. You guys may be familiar with Target Zero, you signed a, uh, interagency agreement previously. Um, the Target Zero program, I'll briefly cover it and go over this, so I'll be direct and quick to get as many things done as I possibly can see for your questions. But the purpose of Target Zero is to reduce, reduce traffic-related deaths, it's run by the Washington Traffic Safety Commission. It provides funds to all the tri-cities and the states, we happen to be in region fourteen. Uh, that includes, uh, Franklin County, all of our partners, Kennewick, uh, Connel, Benton County, it provides, uh, data could be provided to that to provide funds for us. The program, uh, runs off of state grant funds that are sent to us, it's in a pool, we all use the, uh, the funds. They are for pre-selected events for DUIs, impaired, uh, for impaired driving, negligent driving, speed, those kind of programs. And those funds are provided by the state to us, so we are reimbursed when we use it for those overtime details, so that is the point of Target Zero. Uh, it's to just reduce deaths, so we use that program very often, we signed an interagency agreement so we could keep using that program. Uh, what we need now is a interagency agreement, uh, signed and approved to us to have our law enforcement liaison. What the liaison does for us, for that program is just works in between, there's only two in this region, one is Kennewick and one is us. Um, what that does, it's run by the manager, Jen Dorsett, from region fourteen, but they coordinate uh, all these events that happen with Target Zero, with these grant funds, uh, between Connel, Franklin County and Pasco. Whereas KPD takes care of the other side of the river. Uh, they send, they attend two state conferences every year. They assist in instruction, training and best practices to local law enforcement, they come back and report back. They also attend the local meetings with myself, um, and the other ones in the region to, uh, bring back any new information or any, uh, subject to any changes in the grant funds that we could use to the city. Uh, they also tend the, uh, local and the state meetings, they also teach at schools and they focused, uh, part of the program for teen driving. Target Zero, uh, focuses on the high schools and teaching them, you know, the dangers of drinking and driving and what could happen with negligent driving, those kinds of programs. And then they also have community outreach, that's the education and mentorship, uh, new people or kids or new officers that can come out with them on DUI patrols and how those work. And it just promotes safe driving, uh, the best cost is there's no cost, the state reimburses the funds that we use. Uh, they just have to submit their activity log through WEMS, which is, uh, WS, WTSC's, uh, Enterprise Management Systems. Just how they log what they're doing, their activity and how many hours they work, and those get approved by me and one of the supervisors that works for this program. So that's what we're asking to just continue this agreement.
Thank you, Lieutenant Decker, um, Ms. Boras.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, thank you for being here, uh, Lieutenant Decker. Quick question, um, and I'm not sure if you're familiar or Captain Paramore back here might be more familiar with the question, um, this, this, the police department had been doing or has been doing the, um, every fifteen minutes. What is the difference between every fifteen minutes program that you do, you know, in, it's high schools versus Target Zero?
So there are two different programs, I know one was very, excuse me, one was very popular in Pasco. We put that to them to ask the school, or which one you prefer, I think right now they're preferred to every fifteen minutes. Um, Target Zero is a more softer approach to the kids rather than, I'll use the term scare tactics, which is what fifteen minutes is what the opposing themes are, they both have the same goal, it's to reduce deaths, it's reduce, uh, traffic accidents. It's to get teens to understand what's happening and the dangers of driving recklessly and drinking and driving, they're just two different minds of thought. So, Target Zero is more of a softer approach, teaching this is why, you know, you says, why you shouldn't do it, but here's some pros and, and we're gonna, they have an app they use where they pay kids, the state has an app with their kids to drive a certain amount of time, there's lo- logging on their phone, it tracks them that they're not using their phone, they're driving, it pays them ten dollars, I think for every twenty-five hours of driving. And then I think it doubles on top of that, but it becomes more, so it's those incentives that that program uses rather than every fifteen minutes that most of our AROs, our former AROs, now DROs were, are using in the schools, so. Um, it's just the difference of where they go, of what they wanna use, but we have told the school district, it's there. Um, whichever way you want, you want it, you can use it, but the funds are there.
Mayor, just for clarification, so the school district can determine, um, which program they choose, they wanna do e- either every fifteen minutes or Target Zero, follow-up question to that. Do, are there any surveys, results, um, between the both, both programs?
Uh, I don't have that information for you, I know that most of the tri-cities, uh, at least Kennewick and most of the groups when we come to have these meetings for Target Zero, they are mostly using the Target Zero program. And I think Pasco is one of the only ones left using that, so fifty, every fifteen minutes.
Okay, thank you for clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, uh, seeing no further lights, can we get a motion?
Thank you, Mayor, I move to approve resolution number four-four-two-three, authorizing the city manager to execute the interagency agreement between the Washington Traffic Safety Commission and the city of Pasco for the law enforcement liaison, liaison program.
Second.
Sounds like we got a second from Ms. Blaisdell, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, we'll roll on to item number ten, unfinished business, seeing none, and, uh, moving quickly enough to not see Mr. Lincoln, new business, number eleven. Seeing a head shake, uh, miscellaneous discussion. Uh, city manager Lincoln.
A couple items really quickly, uh, first of all, uh, Director Gonzalez has a, a couple things to mention and then, uh, Director Rice has one.
Uh, good evening again, Mayor, members of council, wanted to share that today's city staff attended a, uh, groundbreaking for the Hayden Homes, uh, uh, residential project located at, uh, Road fifty-two in Warrenette. Um, a particular interest was that this, uh, subdivision utilized some of the new, um, uh, housing uh, changes that were adopted by council in January twenty-twenty-two, in this case, lot size averaging, um, which has allowed them to, uh, market the, uh, single-family detached housing, um, prices, uh, starting in the mid-three hundreds, which is a price we haven't seen since pre-COVID and is, is roughly a hundred thousand dollars less than the median listing price that we're currently seeing today. Um, so that's good news that our, our recently adopted code is being utilized and, and in effect and affecting positively uh, potentially home buyers and, um, lastly, wanted to mention that city has been asked to participate in a regional land use, uh, roundtable with the council of governments with, uh, planning directors and community development directors from our neighboring jurisdictions. Um, so look forward to participating in that effort with the council governments, thank you.
Thank you, uh, anything else from staff?
Uh, good evening, Mayor and council, I wanted to echo, uh, Councilwoman Blaisdell's early report of our fur babies and the fuzz adoption event, which was a great success this weekend. Uh, wanna thank both our partnership with Pasco and Kennewick Police Departments who helped draw out what we estimated to be over three hundred people to visit the shelter during that time. Uh, which resulted in, uh, twenty-nine pets being adopted, so that's the highest number. And I will throw out to the police department, they did beat the efforts of the fire department with their adoption events. So we're hoping to, uh, queue up the fire department for a, uh, return challenge later this year, of course, uh, to help clear out the shelter. And do also want to again recognize the donation from the owner of the Chevron gas station at thirty-eight Court Street for his thousand dollar donation early in the morning, which did cover those first twenty adoptions, which uh, was a surprise to many of the members adopting those pets, but definitely, uh, helped get them adopted, so. Appreciate the community's support and, uh, Pasco and Kennewick, uh, police support in that, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Director Rice, uh, Mr. Speralis and then Mr. Harpster, and let's try to keep these abbreviated.
You got it, Mayor, thank you, yeah, I just wanted, I, I didn't wanna comment earlier, uh, Mr. Holder is not here. He left and so I didn't wanna get into the back and forth, um, I hear his comments. Um, but I, I think doing something that was similar to, oh, a couple of years ago of blaming Mr. David Cortinez for the single demile and other stuff is, it's really unfounded. Um, so again, I didn't wanna get into a back and forth with him, but that's why I think it's, it's good, I think it's good that we probably look into bringing the past board, current board members that were there during that time and have them in, and, and, and so we can address them. I mean, there's one of them that comes in the city council meeting every week and I have not heard that person say anything. Um, so, again, I, I just find the comments unfounding and I wish we could have a back and forth. And so maybe perhaps having a forum where we talk about DBDA and what to do going forward would be, um, something that we should probably look into. So, I'll get off that and then just say that I've been contacted by numerous residents about speeding and so um, there was kind of mentioned earlier, there was a couple, uh, little open houses and that's great and, I mean, um, so I'm getting contacted in my district about speeding and, um, a couple of people reached out about looking into lowering the speeding limit on Madison, so, uh, speeding is a big concern to the community and so I just wanted to put that out there and I think that's something we need to address here at our mini-retreat coming up, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harpster.
Yeah, we all received a letter from, uh, Mr. Paul White Marsh and I'll, I'll read part of it. He says, please help us, I walk most days and pick up trash, there's a homeless man who parks his trashed motorhome in Pasco wherever he pleases. When he moves on, he leaves his garbage behind, I have to pick up his trash, human waste. Uh, currently parked at corner Road thirty-four and Henry, blocks the path that the kids use to walk to school, not safe for kids to walk by. Um, please do something. I, I wanted to bring it up to you, because Mr. White Marsh, for those of you that don't know, was a longtime employee of the city of Pasco. Um, a very dedicated resident of Pasco, as are his children. And, um, he is a member of the Pasco High School Hall of Fame, coaching sports for a number of years. His daughter runs Rascal Rodeo, well-known organization, uh, nonprofit here in tri-cities. And so, uh, having known him for almost my entire life, um, I would assume that everything that's in this letter is true, and so with that then, and maybe this question's for Captain Paramore or staff, I'm not sure, but wh- what can we do with something like this, it's aggravated, it's infuriating, he's lived in that home for decades, um, they've maintained it very well. And yeah, they're dealing with something like this, so, you know, the letter asks at the end, please council do something, create some rules or regulations that the police can enforce. My initial reaction, this is a state issue, um, and that there's really unfortunately not much that this body can do. And, um, I just wanna, I guess, clarify that or, or maybe it can be, you know, an email later on.
We can, we can make sure that ev- everything I'm about to say is, um, accurate for, through the police department after this, but um, it, one of the things that has been an emphasis for the department has been trying to, um, locate and, and tow any of the, the RVs that are basically left on the side of the road. Um, that's something that we're, we're working on in partnership with the other cities in the tri-cities because it's something that's not just impacting our community, but it's impacting other communities as well, so that's one investment. Um, I think also, um, you're, you're right, that it is a, a state-level issue and, and I think one of the reasons that you all drafted the, the letter regarding fentanyl was, was to try and, um, bring more attention to, to some of the, the rising issues that our police department or fire department are, are facing from a, a, a public safety standpoint. I, I think that's one of the reasons also why you see that housing, uh, is uh that is is a priority for the those that responded to the 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 survey as well. Um, and and that hasn't been something that there's a a collective solid answer for um from a policy standpoint or from a a staff standpoint, so, um, I can, I can provide you with a a more detailed memo of what we think as as staff, but I I think that we're we're we have the tools we have and we're trying to accomplish what we can, but there's not a silver bullet unfortunately in this case. But we also did let both code enforcement and the police know about the letter the second we got it this afternoon.
Yeah, I appreciate that, thanks.
With that, uh, we'll move on to item number thirteen, there is a need for executive session, do we need a a break before it, it's listed for ten minutes and I'd like to keep it at that, so, I s- huh? I'd like to power through it, but uh, okay, seeing uh, seeing no comments or requests, uh, executive item, executive session, item thirteen. Discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation per RCW forty-two point three zero point one-one-zero subsection one, subsection I, uh, it's expected to be ten minutes. So, we uh will reconvene at uh nine forty-one.